Open the meeting. And let me start streaming town hall streams as well. There we go. So as typical, we open the meeting with our pledge of allegiance. And I believe one of our illustrious has a flag for us.
I do.
All right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to their republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, for all. All right. So we have a roll call of board members. Which it looks like we are short D for the moment. So I'll just start with Marlo.
Hi, I'm here.
And myself, present. That does give us a quorum to get going. I am sure that Dee will be along. Maybe she's fighting with the iPad as well. But I'm sure she'll be here momentarily. So that brings us to announcements and project status. So I will start by announcing the big one that just in case anybody has somehow missed it. Today is when tax day eventually got moved to. So if you somehow haven't done your federal taxes, today is the actual day. Make sure it's done. As I say that, here comes Dee. I'll give her a second to connect to audio. All right, welcome Dee. We just got started, so welcome.
What time is it?
Uh, six thirty-three.
Oh, sorry. My clock's supposed to be Ryan's weird in this house. I don't know.
It's all good. We just opened and I announced that it's actually tax day. The second announcement is a public announcement for the locals. We have townwide yard sale coming up on May twenty-second. So if you want further information on that, you can check our website and I believe that's done as per usual with the school. But you can find more information up on our website and links to that. And the last announcement that I have is that obviously this board and previous board have been doing everything as transparently as possible. But there have been several folks that have said, hey, we wish we knew things easier or had more access to talk to people. And so in vain of that, I'm going to start doing what I'm calling Walk with the Chair. And so Thursday at one o'clock after the department head select board meetings. So that's usually a Monday, the first of the first Monday of the month. Then the Thursday following that meeting, I will be doing Walk with the Chair. And anyone who wants to come and talk and walk with me wherever we end up going, probably up towards the safety building and back. That will be at one o'clock on Thursday. And so if you want to go do that, please feel free to stop in and ask me anything you want to know about the town or complain about it, that's fine too. And then we will take it from there and direct all as appropriate. Do either of the other board members or staff have announcements before I continue to project statuses?
I don't, but that's a good idea, Dave.
Yeah, thanks, Dave. That's a lot to take on for you.
All right, Russ and Dana?
Yeah.
All right.
No, nothing from me, thanks.
All right, and I see nothing from Russ. So I will go ahead and share a screen here. Bring it up. And so this is something that I'm going to start doing and you'll probably see this at each of the department head meetings in the future. And there it is. And so this is basically the project status. And I want to make it easy for anybody to always be able to tell where we are with the given projects. So we have the code inspector that was actually completed last meeting. And so if you want any more information on that position, the assistant town admin, Russ will be able to help you out. The next thing that we need to do is another project, which is go over the fee schedules to make sure that everything is appropriately paid for to make sure that when projects happen that engage our code inspector, then those fees are covering it. IT contracting is complete. We are now using the new service. This will save us a bunch of money as we go forward. And we've had several people in the office using them already who can attest to so far having great service out of them. And if you have more questions about that, you can ask our town admin Dana. The fire department laundry was completed, I believe, last Tuesday, or maybe it was the Tuesday before that as finally being fully operational. So if you have a question about that, ask the fire chief, our illustrious Emmett Bean. And finally, of the completed ones, the police cruiser, that's now in use. So you can ask Chief Adams if you have any questions there. So the other projects, and again, this is a quick, like maybe five minutes for all of them update, just so people know where we are. The police server is being built. That will get installed once it is completed. We're, the IT company is waiting on one more piece for that. And so we expect that to be sometime next month that that gets installed. Any additional questions, you can ask our town admin or myself. The salt shed, we're looking for the road to be complete by the end of the year. Or sorry, before the, before next year or at worst during next year. But we'll have an update from the salt shed committee talking about that in a few moments later on. If you want more information, you can attend the salt shed committee meetings or ask the town admin. Town hall has many ongoing projects, but we've completed several of them. The stoves, well water issues and the gutters have all been completed. So that is all great. Great that we've gotten a whole lot done very quickly. The next project is the LED emergency lights, so we can get those updated and make sure everything is going well there. And so you can ask the town admin if you have further questions there. Fee schedules and the streaming replacement, those are under investigations and next month we'll hear a bit more about that. To briefly cover, we mentioned the fee schedule earlier. Streaming replacement is for dealing with a replacement for either Zoom when we're no longer doing virtual meetings and or town hall streams as they are quite expensive. And so we are looking at that in ways to make it easier to go forward with being able to do streaming and or recording for all of the different meetings. Closepin Bridge, of course, one of the huge projects in town that is on track. It still has a 2022 construction date, which is fiscal 2023. And VHB or our town administrator can give you any updated information on that. White Plains Bridge, similar, we are waiting for temporary easements to be signed so that the engineer can submit their DES application. And as soon as we can move on anything on this, we are doing it to get it done as fast as possible. Town property sales, you'll hear a little bit about that later in the meeting as well. And that's ongoing with reviews happening of additional properties. And you can ask either the town admin or assistant town admin for any more information there. And lastly, Deer Meadow Solar is the large solar project that we have working on. We have a solar subcommittee and you can go to any of those meetings or ask the town admin for information. Next on that is actually an engineering walk with Olive Wood and Rick Vandepoel, who is the town's hired scientist to go over the reviews of the wetlands delineations and similar. And with that, that is the project update. Again, I hope to just provide that very quick, brief update at the beginning of the department meetings in the future, just to make it easy for anyone to tune in and always know where we are with the most current and pressing projects that we have going on.
When is the solar project walk?
That is the morning of the twenty-fifth, I believe. And that is, I don't remember, sorry, I don't know who from the conservation commission was the person appointed to that. So maybe you might want to check on that being our representative to there. I know they've got some turnover happening.
I think I'm, I think I'm the representative.
Okay. With that, moving forward on our agenda, we go into our appointments. And our first appointment is with Kenneth Publicover. I'm sorry if I butchered the name. And that is for a request to purchase. I believe Russ has information on this or Dana.
No, that's, that's mine. I was approached by Ken and Sybil, Sybil Publicover, and I think it's Kenny down there. He must be, who is, must be Ken Publicover. In back of their house, there's a lot that belongs to the town. It's lot ten four twenty-one. This lot was a lot that was given to the town back in two thousand nine. I have done a rough estimate of the lost revenue from it, which is fourteen hundred fifty-five dollars, thirty-three cents. The property is assessed currently at three thousand three hundred dollars. This would, as per our policy, would go out to bid to a butters. And I guess part of the reason that I have this on the agenda is to, A, if you'd like me to send it, put it out to bid, since there's been some interest in it.
All right, Dee or Marlo, any comments or questions?
Well, I think we should put it out to bid. So all your butters, so what would you do, Dana? Send all your butters a notice?
That's you, that's what we've, that are what we've been doing, yes. We would take the butters, would send them each the bid spec with the minimum, which I'd need to work with the board about of what the board would like for a minimum. And then set a date certain for sealed bids to be opened at a board meeting.
Okay, sounds like a plan.
All right. And to clarify, this is in Pillsbury Lake, you said, correct?
It is, it is.
And do you have the size of it? Probably fairly small with the amount it's saying it's.
Yes, I do have the size. It is point three oh acres, point three oh.
And where is it located in Pillsbury Lake?
Third of an acre. It's on Wentworth Circle. And I'm not good at this, but it's Concord Drive. It's in back of Concord Drive.
That isn't one of them pieces of land that we have a runoff on that we use. Has anybody looked into that before? Because some of them tracks of land down there, we haven't sold because there's runoff and different things. So maybe before you get too carried away and sell something that you shouldn't be selling, it should be looked into a little bit to make sure it's not something that we didn't get rid of before for a reason, so.
Could you check that for me, Emmett? Because that I don't know.
Yeah, I, I can get the I know we have a couple of culvert pipes there that run here and there and I just, and we have to maintain them and keep them going. So I would really like to check that out if the board was okay with that to, before we sell it.
So I will make a comment there that, at least when I went through my training with NHMA, they said that any sort of drainage, et cetera, that the town has in place, the town can always keep in place. Even after it's, whether it's changes hands or was the town's property or not once sold. So even if it was a private property that changed hands and the new owner didn't want that drainage, they would actually have no choice but to allow it to stay happening.
We would have the option of writing it into the deed as well.
Okay, no, great. No, that's great then.
But yes, it would be very good to know if that is indeed one of.
And it might not be, might not be.
And, and just, just to refresh how this works, don't we have to put it out to bid?
That is the policy of the town to offer it to a butters first. And if we don't get any bids, then we can open up, up the bid. It's either by bid or auction.
And there are multiple butters in this case, correct?
Yes, um, yes.
All right. Did we have anything further to discuss on that now? Or did you want to go over the, the figures to make that? Or did we want to wait till we got more information from?
Yeah, I guess I would wait to see on that question that Emmett brings up. The lost taxes on it are just under fifteen hundred dollars. The property is assessed at thirty-three hundred. This is a property that does not have a taxpayer that would be owed anything over what their taxes were, so. And again, it's a small, it's a small lot. I was approached by in a butter who has interest in just adding it to their adjoining lot. And of course, Pillsbury Lake, part of the agreement is that this lot would be merged with an existing lot.
Yeah, yeah, that is part of the, the land sales policy that we have.
Right. So really, all I would be looking for from the board is a figure to put as a minimum bid.
It sounds like that lost tax amount would be the greater of the two, so it makes sense. What do the other board members think?
It's not a buildable lot, right?
Not on its own, but it should be merged with something that, are all of the properties around it already built on?
I don't know, to be honest with you. I
I know at least the people that have expressed interest so far have houses.
Obviously, if this was merged with the, with the within a butter, if they already had a home on their lot, they wouldn't be able to add another home. Something like that. And it certainly is not a buildable lot on its own.
Dana, is this ten four twenty-one?
Yes.
So there is a town-owned lot abutting at ten four twenty-two. Did we want to merge it like we did last time? To make sure that we get rid of all the little lots before we put it for sale, if that is what.
Well, we, it is, that is an option. I, I, I was looking at, it's on a cul-de-sac, right? Yeah.
Yeah, that other lot is really weeny.
Although, if it's really, really teeny.
It's on Concord Drive. It's on Concord Drive. There's no cul-de-sac on Concord Drive.
This is according to the map. It's Wentworth Circle.
No, Wentworth Circle was done away with years ago.
Maybe we should update our maps.
Well, it was done away with. It's just a paper road. It never got built. So lots back there are not buildable because there is no, there's no front.
But there are a lot of, lot of lots abutting it, that's for sure.
Okay, so it sounds like we have a few different questions. So does the board feel comfortable with asking Dana and or Russ to come back with the abutting town-owned lots and the information about the lots? So we can either merge or, and or put up to bid at our next meeting?
Yes, I think that's a good idea, Dave.
I agree.
All right. That sounds like the way forward then. All right.
So we're going to get information about abutting lots? If there's any of the lots that can be merged, okay, yeah.
And what we may or may not be using those lots for as the town. And if, if there's a reason for us to keep them.
Fair enough. Okay, thank you. I'll have that for you at the next meeting.
Perfect. All right.
Can I ask one question? If that Wentworth Circle is discontinued, the people on the other side of Wentworth Circle, do they call that in a budding lot too? That, I'd like to look into that too, if they're not gonna, I don't know how they do that.
That's a good question.
If, if the road doesn't exist, I would say yes.
Well, that's good. That someone needs to, but we'll, we'll look into that. I don't have an answer to that, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so moving on, our next appointment is the salt shed committee. And I believe we have Chris back to be able to give that presentation.
I am so here.
Awesome.
To give this presentation. So Russ, can I?
You should be able to share.
Okay, excellent. All right, so. Let's see. I want to open this up. Slideshow from the beginning. Okay, and then sorry. What's going on here? I, I have lost the ability to share. Hold on, I think I've got it. Share. Here we go. Okay, can you see? What I'm looking at? Okay. There we go. Okay, so thank you very much for letting us have a time slot here. I'm hoping that my computer holds up under the intense PowerPoint presentation here. The, you know, originally, okay. Originally, we were looking at get, getting some engineering to build a driveway from the bottom of the safety building parking lot up along the south side of the safety building and into what was formerly the McCallan's property, but now is property that the town owns specifically to house the salt shed and possibly in the future to house a, a highway department. And we own forty plus acres back there. So that, that was a sort of a, the original intent was to get a driveway up there. We, Craig, did some research into different engineering firms, talked to a number of people. Two of the firms were willing to come out and take a look at our project because it's very small. A small project for what these guys normally do. And Craig's going to talk about the specifics of that in a little bit. And as we were talking to both of the engineering firms, you know, they, as they were looking at the site, and let me go to this so that we can all be on the same page, as they were looking at the site, they looked over here at this hill coming down from the, the future site of the salt shed and recognized that there would be water control issues. And Emmett was there that day. And so Emmett, being the authority on, you know, the water control issues at the safety building, had a conversation with people from both engineering firms. And we, we were thinking that because the town has had an interest in fixing the drainage behind the safety building and also repairing that, that apron to the south side of the safety building, that maybe we could fold these two projects in together. And then as the day wore on, we went down to the very bottom where the drainage currently is. And there's a culvert here which carries the water to another culvert that's approximately here under Battle Street and down into the river. And we had them look at the possibility of putting in a second entrance exit from the safety building parking lot, which is something that both the police and the fire department have been talking about wanting. And I think it was in the last year or so, there was some kind of an accident or something at the bottom of the police parking lot. And it actually closed off entrance and exit into the safety building, ironically, making it incredibly unsafe for that period of time. And that highlighted the necessity of putting another, another drive somewhere out here. So what, what we have, what we have decided to do is take all three projects, look at money that is in the highway fund specifically to deal with the salt shed, which is right now about a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. And then look at what possible monies there might be in the safety building budget to contribute to this project. And I think that you know, it's possible that we can get all three done, which is not why we're here tonight to talk about getting all three done. We're here specifically to say that one of the two engineering firms has emerged as a better candidate for the town. And I'll, I'll talk about that a little bit right now. So I talked about the salt shed driveway, erosion control for the safety building parking lot and the second driveway entrance exit. The three projects are being considered because they all impact one another. We're talking about the control of water off of that town-owned property. Moving the water in a way that makes sense, that won't flood, moving it back down into that culvert underneath Battle Street and away. And so the engineering firm that we selected was Hoyle and Tanner. So Craig, do you want to jump in here and talk about this for a second?
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, for Cam.
Okay. Yeah, there are two, two main issues here. One is that the road is approximately ten percent grade, which is a very big grade. And the other is the drainage issue. And we felt that there needed to be some engineering work as to figure out a good solution to that, to those two problems. So anyway, I contacted five companies and two of them were interested. They're both reputable firms. They've done projects for municipalities in New Hampshire. I have confidence that both of them could do it a big, a, 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 a good job. One firm I felt, Fussin, Fussin O'Neill had a, had a better proposal, a more detailed proposal, if you will, than Hoyle and Tanner, but their price was twice what Hoyle and Tanner was. So it became a fairly easy decision at that point. What we're asking now is, is for money for engineering work. We're not committing to any we're not asking you to commit to anything more than that at the moment.
So, so when Craig, when Craig says road, he's referring to the driveway. So so, yeah, so, you know, it's taken us a while to get through the engineering part and and Emmett, you know, we're, we're hoping that we do this, we do all of this in stages. The stages need to be laid out. There's more detail that needs to be sorted through. I guess Emmett, I'm glad you're here. So Emmett talked with the DOT guy about this particular culvert. Isn't that right, Emmett?
No, we talked about the new driveway on the upper side towards the safety building.
Okay.
And he's the guy that does all the driveways there for the Division Five, District Five. And he lays out what you can do and what you can't do. And so right at the moment, I'm working with Dana. Dana has putting all the stuff together to get into the state. And we might not even be able to put that driveway in because they have regulations, just like the town. You can only have so many driveways and so many feet. And Dana and I are working on that with the gentleman from the state. And we have a process we have to figure out, so, um, we might not even, we might not even be able to put that other driveway in there and, and it's gonna be a little bit before we know because of the, the footage that we have and the amount of driveways that we have, and it's not just the driveways that we have. It goes back to nineteen seventy-one. So the McGowan's and all the neighbors down the street, you have to include their driveways as well still, so, it's work in progress. And it's done a lot to help me with that, so, um. So before we move any further on the driveway, we have to make sure we can even do it.
Sure.
Did I explain myself right, Dana, on that?
Yes, Emma, that's, you just, I have gotten those things together with the state, but I think you were clear. You just want to make sure that we, um, the state will give us permission to put an access there.
So this, the, the gentleman that we're working with, he puts this all together and then sends it to the above him people to, to see if it's even gonna happen, so.
Okay. Well, we're not gonna let that second driveway, um, sort of deter us from getting going on the drive up to where the salt shed's gonna be. So if we can accomplish the second driveway, that would be great. If the state says no, that's not so great, but it, it will be what it will be. You know, there's, anyway, I, I don't want to get into the weeds there, but the, um, just for the people that, that don't know, that aren't very familiar with this site, uh, the black lines surrounding this is really the area that this, that this project is, is looking at right now. But the town owns land all the way off to the right side of this, oh, over to the stone wall. So we are not necessarily limited to having the driveway there. We do have the option of putting the driveway a little bit further to the north. But, you know, we don't have to worry about that now. So, um, the, the estimate that Hoyle and Tanner provided the town was ten thousand dollars to do the specifications on all three of these mini projects or projects within the big project. Uh, we may be able to actually get their help for less money if we can carve off the, the driveway, the second driveway, and make that into its own project. So what we're looking for from the select board right now is the okay to go ahead and use money from the highway fund to begin the engineering, uh, specifically on the drive up to, I think, up to the stone wall. There's a, there's a question about where exactly the drive is going to, is gonna cross the stone wall. It may be a little bit further to the north. There's, there are a lot, there's still a lot of discussion that needs to take place, I think, between the engineers and Emmett. So right now, you know, it's just, uh, the committee wanting to move forward and get the engineering going.
Okay, uh, is there any more in the presentation or are you looking for questions?
I'm looking for questions. I figured that you would probably have a few of them.
Yes, um, so I guess my first question is, has anybody, especially since we own the land, further to the right on this map, uh, that we may have to use for the second driveway anyway, has anybody looked at using or, or floated the idea and asked if that might make sense as a way up to the salt shed location, uh, instead? Because I believe that is a, well, it doesn't have the kind of path that's already there that the left side does. The right side, I believe, is lower going up into that back section.
Well, Dave, if I may, we have been over this a number of times in committee talk and with the engineers, and it would be more expensive to go the other way. It would also bring traffic next to the one a butter that had great concern about the noise and, and all the rest of that. So we're trying to, we're trying to keep things as inexpensive as we can and, and the noise as as low as we can.
That makes sense. And are there any other, uh, are there any other issues that you're aware of that could, uh, sidetrack or derail or prevent the project from going forward?
Now, I'm gonna speak just for, this is just my opinion. There's a, a number of members of the committee that are here. I think that we believe that in terms of putting the driveway in and fixing the, uh, water issue behind the safety building, I don't believe that there's anything that we would have to worry about. Understanding, of course, the fact that this culvert is going to need to be enlarged. And I don't know if the DOT has something to say about about that. The engineering firm, uh, is going to suggest the size of the culvert that's gonna be required to put all this water down through it. So as far as I know, I, I think we're, uh, we're in a good place. Anybody else from the committee wanna, wanna voice an opinion here?
Oh, I will. Uh, we do, if we change anything in this driveway, when this guy was out from the state, we need to file a new driveway permit because there's gonna be construction going on there. And if we get the driveway permit for the new driveway that we wanna put in, that will, that will work with, one permit will work with both driveways. He'll make that happen.
Okay, good.
That has to be all a, a driveway permit from that. And what did you find out about your black racers today, Chris?
Well, um, so the, the black racers are a species of concern that the state is watching because their numbers have been in decline, but their status is not endangered yet. The habitat that seems to be, uh, preferential for them is the, is the habitat that is in the back part of the property, although they will use open areas. And George, George Embly is here. George, when the fish and game guy was talking to us last year, he, we explained to him that the town had purchased the property and that there was going to be potentially a highway department that was gonna be on site down the road, but definitely a salt shed. And he, as far as my memory goes, and it could be better, um, he, he recognizes that and, uh, want, just wants to know how they're using the property, but recognizing that they could use the property in the back. The black racers, that is. George, is that the way you remember it?
Yeah, I don't, I don't remember that he had any particular issues with the salt shed there.
Yeah.
And, uh, he did plan to come out again in the spring. I need to, I still need to call him to find out if he's still planning to do that. But, uh, that was, that's the way he left it when he was out this fall, this fall.
Any other questions?
Uh, I guess I'm just gonna ask Emmett as our, I know he's been on the committee or to the committee at various points. But Emmett, as our road agent, what, uh, is your opinion, uh, on all of this?
Uh, I guess, where are you on my opinion on what, the safety building parking lot or the hill or?
Kind of all of it. You're, you're our, you're our expert here, so.
Well, the committee has put a lot of time and effort into that, and Craig has got a hold, like, like he said, five different engineer firms. Two of them did come out. I, I met with both, um, both firms. You know, they were awesome people to talk to and to deal with. I I mean, you guys, um, voted, uh, the, to get that engineered, which is all good. I mean, ten thousand dollars for, um, less than five hundred feet of driveway. It's kinda hard to swallow, but, um.
Well, we're, we're getting more than that though, Emmett, right? We're getting, we're getting the engineering done for the back of the building, controlling the water and et cetera, to get that, to get that apron redone as well.
You're not controlling the water. You just gotta stop the water from getting underneath the pad and going around. I mean, I, I have nothing. I, I'll work with an engineer all day long. I do it on private jobs. I, I don't know how many miles of road I've built in this town for the, since two thousand five, two thousand six.
Right.
And all that, and I've never, I've never been required to have that engineered. I've done it all with experience and talking to other people in bigger contractors, if I need advice, um. Yeah, I, yeah, I, I know you folks talked about having it engineered, and I guess you guys agreed on doing that, and I, I, I'm not gonna argue the point, but, I mean, I, yeah. I think you know where I'm going, but I'm, I'll, I'll do whatever it takes. If it's an engineer I gotta work with, that, that will happen, but to I, I've talked to both firms and we've talked back and forth and stuff, and they kinda shared some of their ideas and I shared my ideas and it's, we're, we're on the same page. It's, it's, um, I, I built, I built manure pits for the government that conservation people in farming and the government, you're working for them. They come out and they check that and with all their stuff and I don't know. I don't know. You guys can spend the money if you want. That's, that's all I have to say. But if you wanna, I.
So from your earlier comments, uh, Emmett and also Dana, it sounds like that you already have the second driveway under control at this point. Is, is there a advantage to engineering or are you basically being told by the state, this is the way you're gonna do it?
Yeah.
If we can.
You do it the way the state tells you and where you're gonna put it, and, um, they do the site distance both ways. It's gotta be three hundred feet site distance on this project, not a hundred like the town has in theirs. It's three hundred foot road site distance. And I showed the gentleman where I wanted it, where Chris has it in there now on the downhill side of that culvert, and he just looked at me and said, no, it's not gonna work. If you wanna do this project, you're gonna come over to where that mailbox is and come in more of an angle. Well, I'm pointing to the thing. You can't see what I'm pointing on back with Chris has her line going up like the boundary line coming in on an angle. And right there where them trees are, come into where she has on the other side of the propane tanks. You folks know where they're at. They're right in. Yeah, and, um, that's how it's gonna have to be done. And, and you're gonna do it his way, the state's way, or it's not gonna happen. Have three engineers do the project and they can tell you how to do it, but you're not gonna okay it at the end.
Well, if we can get away with not needing engineering on this, all the better. I, I, you know, they said that they would work with us. And, you know, they, they stressed that a number of times, and so they understand that the situation is fluid. And you know, if we don't, if we don't need to, to have them do the engineering, if the state's gonna do the engineering for us, that's great. And, and we'll, we'll be able to save some money there.
Well, let me, let me say a few things here. I highly respect Emmett's opinion and his ability. I think the reason we're going with an engineering firm is to get this done right, not that Emmett wouldn't do it right, but we need the assurance for the town and for the selectmen that, you know, ten, twenty years down the road, I want people to say, you know, this was done right.
And that's why the committee, you know, al- almost unanimously decided to go with, you know, an engineering company, and then finally with this one. So, you know, we, we, we have every confidence that Emmett can do this work. This is just a, you know, a CYA thing, basically.
So I have a question. What, what is the difference, Emmett, of where they want the driveway and where you say the state, it's gotta be three hundred feet from the other driveway. Is that the problem?
No, no, it, I said three hundred feet site distance. So when you pull out, you gotta be able to look three hundred feet both ways for vehicles. And, um, that's where the three hundred feet comes into. And where I wanted to put the driveway in, like, right now, when we were looking at it in the spring, the ferns and stuff weren't there. So now you can see the ferns. So to stay out of there, you go to the right, looking at it dead on, you go to the right over by where Chris has a boundary line going up.
Yeah, yeah.
And it's not such a big dip. It's gonna, it's gonna not take as much fill, and then there's not much water runoff on the right coming into that culvert that's going across Battle Street. So you're not making any interruptions where I was gonna put the driveway here in the pipe where it drops into across the street. So you, you're not gonna change the flow of water from the driveway we have now to the culvert pipe that goes across Battle Street, which made, w- once we talked about that with the guy from the state, it made perfect sense. I mean, you.
So the, the pipe isn't where the, they proposed, the pipe is more in that other line, the, the one that goes under Battle Street?
Yeah.
More in that long line?
Well, over to the left a little bit.
Oh, okay, alright.
But is it between the boundary line and the utility pole?
Correct. It's right at the utility pole, actually, pretty much to the right of the utility pole.
Oh, yeah, I see that.
Yeah, yeah. So it would get away from all that. It would, it would save, it would stay out of it. The guy, the guy knew what he was doing.
I have a question.
Please.
Okay, so with this second entrance, and, you know, I, I haven't been, you know, paid attention enough to know where they wanna move it to, Emmett, is that gonna take a lot more fill? Is that more of a divot in there?
No, it's less of a divot.
Oh, okay.
It's a little bit longer driveway, but i- it's less of a divot and, um, the, you won't need a big, a huge pipe. It, yeah.
So then I, so then I, just one other thought, which may be crazy, so, but hey, why not throw it out there? Over by where the entrance is where that one time it got blocked. Um, would it be a lot cheaper? Or would it be more cost effective to maybe just? And I know the state would have to approve it, but maybe you could say emergency vehicles only with a gate or something? But that's a pretty big, that's a pretty big divot there though, too, isn't it? Next to where you actually.
Yeah, yeah. And then, and that's, that might be what happens. That might be what happens. That's gonna be another option. If we have too many driveways in the, in the footage of the property, that is another option. If we do do a driveway, they might let us put a driveway up on the town hall side of that, but it would have to be gated and only used for an emergency ex, exit and, uh, only.
And would that, would that save quite a, that would save quite a bit of money if they, i- if between the other Between the other way, correct? Would it, I, well, I don't know, right?
No, it wouldn't save any money, it'd be the, it would be the same cost of the money putting the second driveway in, it would just be gated, you could only use it, you know.
Because it's gonna need so much more fill?
No, actually, it's gonna be less filled, the way the guy from the state set it up is the way that I'd showed the committee. How it should be done and it's gonna be easier, actually.
To do, to do, to move it to where you were saying over here?
If you, if you go down there by the telephone pole.
Yeah, I see it.
Yeah, and then you look back, there's a mailbox. To the north side of that, um, telephone pole, we'd have to move that mailbox and that's where the new entrance would go through.
Okay.
So it's kind of like where Chris has her black. Black line there for.
I didn't make this map, just so you know.
Oh, well, okay.
This is, this is the engineer, the engineers did this, yeah, so.
Looks like that's marked as, they have a picture of the mailbox, I think that says 860 on it. In the, in the engineering handout.
Where, that's across the street because they're 851 at the safety building, so that would be 860, that number on the mailbox.
So I, can I ask a really dumb question? Why do we have to have two, two driveways? Can we make that first driver that's already there like twice the size? And ha- be able to have vehicles pass, is that, would that be anything or is that just crazy?
Well, it's quite a dip there to fill in and you're gonna have, um, 80 feet of culvert instead of 30 feet of culvert and, um. Yeah, no, I mean, it, it's a, it's an idea, but. If we can make it work up, up on the other end, that would be, that would be, we might not be able to make it work.
I just was wondering, that's, I'm, I'm just.
D, I was kind of asking the same thing, so.
Yeah, that's what I thought you were kind of asking.
Yeah, but that's fine, that's.
Actually, there's a stone wall, there's a stone wall, um, right there, Dee, where.
Oh.
You'd want to add on to that and then to destroy, you know, it's, I don't know, history, uh, whatevers, and then you get into the wetland stuff there and, um.
Okay.
It's wet, so. Sometimes it's better off not to rock the apple cart.
Yeah, no, you're right, you're right.
And, and the, the thing that I would point out is the original reasoning for wanting that second driveway. Was so that they wouldn't have a possible bottleneck in the event of an emergency or crash or whatever on the one driveway. So making the one driveway larger. Makes it a little harder that you wouldn't be able to get around it, but doesn't really solve the issue. So I think the, the second driveway is, is gonna be the way to, to do it if it's gonna be done.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Can I make a comment?
Please.
It's Roy. The rea- the reason for the second driveway. Was the power lines go over on the west side of Battle Street. Correct me if I'm wrong, Emmett, we had a pole come down and the wires came across the current driveway we have. We could not get the emergency vehicles out if we needed them someplace else. That's why we were looking at the north driveway. Is another emergency unit, just in case, another emergency access. Or exit from the safety building. Because, you know, chances are unless we had like that ice storm back. How many years ago, 20 some odd years ago, chances are we're not gonna lose all the power lines.
Ninety-eight.
Okay, the, the 98 power storm, you know, that really did a job on every place. So i- that second driveway, yeah, i- it could be posted emergency use only.
That sounds like that would be, be on the other side of the utility pole too.
That's why, because if you really look at it, if, if, when you're looking at the diagram. That black line to the left that comes down on the south end of the driveway. Is a utility pole in that area. Then there's a utility pole in the brown section just before where the proposed driveways put in. And they were gonna move another utility pole so that driveway could go in there. So i- it's spacing it out, let's put it that way, in case if a pole came down. We can still get in and out of the public safety building in the future salt shed.
Okay.
That, that, that's the big reason for the other driveway.
Okay. Especially in an ice storm, you really want to be able to get the salt shed.
Yeah.
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 True. All right, uh, do we have any other questions or comments on this? All right, um, so it sounds like we are looking at this with the two instead of three projects. Because the, uh, second driveway appears to be well in hand with the state. What does the rest of the board think and do we want to suggest doing it that way to the committee or?
Are you asking if we're, if we're looking to agree with the fact of the second entrance?
I'm looking to see what you, what you guys think, cause they want to, the, the salt shed committee is looking to. Have money to go and do the engineering for this. And if they are including engineering for the extra driveway, which it sounds like the state's up basically already doing for us with Emmett. Uh, then that's gonna be the, the full cost that they've presented to us of. 10,000 plus suggesting another 4,500 be set aside, uh, for during construction. Versus whatever would be without that, uh, driveway.
But, but, or, or do, or the option of. Not really, there may not. If the state's doing a lot of the stuff. And.
Yeah, that's the point, that's the point.
I do agree with Emmett that. You know. I don't, I, I don't, I don't see the need in spending the money in the engineer part of things.
Just to clarify, are you saying at all or only for that second driveway?
Um, at all.
Oh.
I don't, you know, it's not, I mean, the fact that the state's already gonna, on the other side, tell us what to do over here anyways, they'll tell us what culvert we need and. And, you know, how that's gonna work and even the state, I mean, you, maybe you can correct me if I'm wrong. Even putting this other road up there, you know, they have it, they have a little bit of say in, in the water runoff anyways and. You gotta divert the water and I just, like Emmett's saying, he knows what he's doing, so I guess I'm not sure. Sometimes engineers can make things more difficult in the end, but. And they need to be, so that's my opinion on it. As putting in roads ourselves.
Um, Emmett, since Marlo at, uh, so mentioned the state for the access road portion, did you want to comment on that in the, the runoff? Is that something they give us guidance for as well or no?
Yeah, I know I were, I talked with the gentleman on the other side, I didn't, we didn't do a whole lot of talking other than about. The driveway permit to do that others and, um. There is gonna be some runoff, but I can't really see how much. You're gonna get, you're gonna get runoff, you got runoff now. You got runoff now, the water's gonna run downhill, I don't care what part of New Hampshire you're in, water's gonna run downhill. It's running downhill right now. You just gotta slow it down. I- in, in, you know. I, I, I rebuilt Pearson Hill back in 2007. Probably the steepest hill you have in the town of Webster. I put new dr- cross pipes in, I put erosion rock in the side. You get your vegetation back in there the way it's supposed to be. Pearson Hill's still there, we've had more heavy rain in the last 10 years. Than we've had in my whole entire 63 years of living in New Hampshire, so. Just gotta be done and it's gotta be done right. So I, I.
So, so on behalf of the committee, the committee has been over and over and over this and we've talked this through with Emmett as well. And we're all of the opinion that posterity, people are gonna look back. 20, 30 years from now and, and we want to make sure. That the way, especially the drive up to where the salt shed is gonna be. We need to make sure because of that 10% grade and that the, the heft of the. The heft of the machinery that's gonna be going up and down this road. Over the course of time is very different than the, the cars that go on Pearson Hill. There are gonna be huge trucks carrying incredibly heavy loads and. Um, you know, the committee decided for the safety of the town and, and the rest of it, that we need to protect ourselves. And we're not saying that Emmett can't build the road, we want him to build the road. We think he can build the road, but it's an insurance, it's an insurance gambit for the town. And so, you know. We, we all felt. That, uh. You know, to make sure. That the town is covered by, you know, professional engineers. That we need, we need to do this. I agree, Marlo, that I think we're gonna be able to save some money and let the, the state. Go ahead and engineer that driveway for us.
So I want to ask you one question, Chris.
Okay.
I've worked for a lot of engineer firms over the, the years and I think Marlo has too. Um, because I know what they do, so. When you talk to that engineer and firm, you ask them how long that, and once that project's done and they came out and signed off on it. You ask them how long they're gonna stand behind it. They're gonna tell you until the first next rain.
Oh, I.
Can I say a few things?
If I'm wrong, I want to be corrected, but that's what you go.
One of the things, if, you know, if, if Emmett builds it and it screws up, you know. Emmett's at, at risk, right? So I would think that Emmett would be encouraged to have some engineering done on this. The other thing about the drainage, you can't just put culverts under this road and run the, run the runoff down into the. Public service building, right?
Why, who would do that?
Well, I'm saying that there has to be a, some engineering done, how are you gonna, how are you gonna do the drainage? That's one of the big issues here.
Just like, okay, I'm not here to argue, I, I, we could argue all night, I, I'm, I'm done arguing. I just, whatever, you want to hire an engineering firm for the hill? That's great. I, I, like I said, I told you this a hundred times, I'll work with anybody, I can work with anybody. I'm just, Dave asked me my opinion. And I, I gave it to you, that doesn't mean that that's the way it is, I don't have the vote here.
All right. Thank you, so.
Yeah, I had something, but I've lost it now, so it's all good. It, it is, it is good. To have that insurance, to ha- to, to blame it onto the engineers, but that's all we're gonna be able to do is blame it onto them. Because they're not gonna come back and give you your money back when it don't work.
And, and there is plenty of examples of licensed engineered stuff that, that fails and then. It's usually the contractor that holds the bag anyways.
Yeah.
So, and I, we did a job in the town of Henniker. 15 years ago and we were doing a redo that an engineer actually engineered. And, uh, you know, didn't, didn't do the proper things and the town had to redo it and we were the ones that redid it, but.
If you. If you read the engineering spec carefully, they talk a lot about working with the town and with, what that means is working with Emmett. And I would hope that the engineering firm would work with Emmett to, to come up with a, a, a really good solution.
So we have heard from, uh, multiple people here. Dee, what is your kind of thinking on this? We haven't heard much from you so far.
Listening, I'm listening. Well, I think we, the, we've. This committee has worked a long time, if I'm not mistaken on this, I don't know how, I mean, there's numerous people on the committee. So they've worked a long time on this and everybody wants to get it right, I mean, really. I didn't know, I'm just wondering if on the, the new driveway side. Emmett says the state's gonna tell them what to do anyway, can you eliminate that from the engineering and just do the engineering on the big, big road up? Up, um, the railroad there, the, to the salt shed?
Well, we're hoping that we, you know, if the, I, I'd have to, I'd have to really understand. What the state would give us on that road.
Yeah, that's what I'd like to know.
Yeah, if they're gonna engineer it, then we can drop that out of their, of the estimate. But. You know, um, there's the back of the safety building as well. Now, understand that the engineers are only gonna do. You know, this $10,000 is gonna buy, or 10,000 or less, I guess, is gonna buy us specifications. That, um, Emmett would follow then in doing the work. And the work, the work is money on top of all of this. So we're not saying that for $10,000, we're getting a road and a new proposed paved area behind the safety building. So, you know, we're talking a lot of money here to get this whole thing done. And I, you know, I'm talking for this, for the salt shed committee now and please disagree with me if. If, if you feel that you want to, but, you know, if, if we don't have to have engineering done. On, on that driveway, great. Well, just as soon as the state did it.
So what is the, what is the cost, it's $10,000, you're, for the engineer that you, engineering company, are we asked to get? Okay, your engineering company and the money today?
Yes, so the engineering company in their handout that they provided to, uh, uh, that the. Committee provided to us says that they're using the, uh, assumptions and the basis from previous, which we've seen much of in Chris's presentation. Uh, they proposed to assist the town with tasks one through four, which is the engine, all of the engineering side of it. For a lump sum of $10,000. And then they also recommend an additional allowance of approximately 4,500 for, uh, construction assistance. That the road agent can use for guidance and for checking out differing field conditions. That is what they have in their fee section for the handout that we were provided, which is listed as Hoyle Tanner, one of three. And that's the last page of that, if you're looking at the.
I'm looking for.
We were given.
And, and then that 4,500, is that because then they'll come, they'll want to inspect as he goes along, correct? Or is that in the $10,000? I mean, for them to, for them to probably hold their stamp on it, they're gonna want to come out and make sure that what the plans say. That they're, you know, inspecting it, uh, you know, and checking that Emmett's done what their plans say, is that correct?
That's correct.
So ultimately, it'll probably be around 15,000 at the end of the project.
If they were doing all three, yeah, that's what we're saying.
And if, you know, if Emmett felt that he needed. Guidance somewhere, then they would come out and consult with him. But. I, I'm imagining that Emmett is gonna be able to build this road to spec. Without needing a lot of consultation.
But still, does that 10,000 include inspections? From the engineer or is that, that, is that what the four, 4,500 dollars is?
Craig, can you answer that?
Go on.
Is he not here? Oh gosh, he's not there.
He, he's still connected, but he's not sitting in front of the computer. Uh, I'll say that they mentioned tasks one through four and four is layout and permitting support assistance. Which is prepare a concept plan for use with NHDOT, drive permitting and utility relocations. And acquire and provide basic supplemental information. The on-call field assistance is task five, which is the 4,500 additional. Corrections is, and task one, two and three are. The base plan, the drive and drainage recommendations and the existing parking area drainage corrections. Uh, which are. uh, which are working closely with the town, uh, and planning. They don't mention any inspections or basically sign off.
That might be a question to ask, you know, because a lot of times if an engineer is gonna put their stamp on it, which is what it sounds like the board's looking kind of for, so they hold responsibility. Unless that, that might be in the ten grand. I just, you know, the language.
My interpretation of that is that that forty-five hundred is for several times of inspection and a final inspection. That's about forty-five hundred.
So Craig, would that be, um, part of them putting their stamp on it, which is what you guys are kinda looking for? Wouldn't they need to inspect it as it's going along, or is that included in the ten thousand?
No, that's the forty-five hundred.
Okay, okay. So ultimately, at the end of the day, if we go with them to do the engineering, it'll probably be low, closer to fifteen thousand than ten thousand.
Yeah, that's probably right.
Yeah.
Ask a question?
Please.
Um, maybe this is a stupid question, but I, this is all new to me. I haven't seen this picture before. And I keep wondering why the salt shed is so far away. Why is it so far from the safety building? Why do we need such a long driveway? Is that really the best place for it? I'm assuming that is the best place for it. You wouldn't have chosen it, but it's just.
The, uh, I'll, I'll answer part of that, that I, I know and understand, which is that the hill behind the safety building is rather steep. So making it closer would basically push it onto a budding land, uh, or right next to a budding land as opposed to the land that we purchased, which is a mostly flat area up on top of that hill.
Okay.
Um, but, uh, there may, there very well may be other good answers and reasons for that that I'm unaware of, uh, such as if wetlands are right next to it.
No, no, there's not. It's, it's, Betsy, it's just, it's because the land, the land above where it says page eleven, site of future salt shed.
Yes.
Um, it's flat up there.
Okay.
And so if someday, you know, after we move the salt shed, if someday the town decides that it wants a highway department, there's lots of good, flat, dry land that's been cleared.
Thinking ahead. Okay, thank you. I didn't, yeah, just wondered.
Yep.
Um, all right. Do we have any other comments or questions on this as it sits? Okay, um, so I have one other comment here, and I think we're mainly addressing it already with not, uh, looking at including the second driveway. And that is just to say that the, um, salt shed committee is of course tasked for the salt shed, not the, uh, overall safety building and its driveways. Um, I know it absolutely makes sense if we are going to do more engineering to bundle it all together, so the town gets a better rate. Um, so thank you for, for thinking of all of that. Um, but especially with knowing that the state is doing all of the guidance and stuff for the second driveway. Um, I would definitely be in favor of not including the second driveway uh, in further consideration of the salt shed committee. The, I guess the rest is we're looking at whether we should have uh, engineering done and pay the roughly fifteen grand, uh, or not. Uh, depending on what the, uh, what people's opinions are. Um, before I go and ask the board about that specifically though, um, I know you have had, uh, a lot of different, um, people's input and a lot of time spent, uh, for the salt shed committee, uh, coming up with, uh, what you're recommending to us here. And so do you want to, uh, name off the people that have been part of that and helping? Or, you know, give a number of those people, uh, so that, uh, we can recognize and thank them for their time and effort?
Absolutely. So Craig Fournier, uh, Linda Clark, uh, George Hembley, Barbara Corliss. Um, T. Who am I forgetting? Oh, Barb Mackey, good lord, Barb Mackey. Um, I think, uh, I think that's about it. Roger Becker has, has been helpful from the sidelines.
Roy.
And Roy.
That's right.
See, I can't see the whole gallery from where I am, so, yeah, Roy, I'm sorry, yes.
All right.
Yes, they, and everybody, everybody's been great. They've shown up, they've gone on field jaunts. We've bushwhacked together and, you know, all of that, so.
Emmett's been there too.
That's right. It's been there. And, you know, I mean, that, we're, this is a long haul project. You know, once that, once that drive is up, you know, then and we've got the whole, the whole, what is the salt shed gonna consist of? And where's it gonna be put? And how much is that gonna cost? And, you know, this is years of work we have ahead of us yet, so.
Where are the stumps buried in the clarion?
Right.
So he, here's a silly question, and based on the kind of mandate of, you know, going for a salt shed with the salt shed committee, would it not make more sense to look at, uh, if we're going to do engineering for all of this, doing the engineering up through the salt shed, and then we perform the actions as required up to that point uh, in the sections that we have money and time to do as the town versus this kind of what looks like a segmented approach of just the road, and then we'll worry about the salt shed later?
I don't understand what you're saying, that the town, the town would worry about putting the driveway in?
So.
I mean, we have spent, we have spent so much time, Dave, considering the drive.
Oh, no, 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 I'm not saying that, that the drive should not be considered. Uh, what I'm saying is that since we're already considering this, but the end goal is of course to actually have a salt shed and then maybe a future DPW. Uh, if we're spending engineering effort, wouldn't it make sense to spend the engineering effort through completion of the project instead of just for the road, if we're willing to spend that engineering effort?
Oh, well, we've, we've considered that. But that, you know, the big challenge is that hill. And, and, you know, the weight of the equipment going up and down and all of that. I, I mean, we haven't really talked past the stone wall, to tell you the truth. Um, you know, we, we've tackled this in various stages because it's a really big project. And so stage one is just getting up there. And then as soon as we're up there, then, then we, we begin the process of stage two, and that's flat land that I don't know that we would need engineering help on that, but, you know, I'm speaking just for me here because the committee has not even begun to consider this. And as Emmett says, there's stumps that are buried and there, yeah, there's all sorts of, you know how it is with old properties.
Yep.
So.
Yeah, so. Can I throw something in there, Chris?
Yeah.
Um, this is George Hembley. Um, I think when we looked at this, the idea was to get this road put in within the next year.
Right.
And, uh, if we waited to get engineering done on the whole project, we might not get there this year. So, I, I think the decision was made to parse it out like this, so we, we can get this part done quickly.
Right, and I, I agree with the committee on that, Dave, about getting to the stone wall and then figuring out, we gotta dig a bunch of test pits up there to find out where the stumps are buried because you don't wanna build the road over a pile of stumps. Once we get onto stage two, or, um, for whatever's build the building on with the stumps are. So that's gonna take some stuff. Um, and then when we build the building, you know, we'll have that engineered. So it holds the salt contain, contained to the salt shed, so it doesn't leach off pitch the right way. It's just like when you build a compost, Ben, everything has to be tipped back to so many degrees and stuff, which we've done a lot of them. Um, but I think for right now, we get to the top of the hill in, in doing stages like, um, like we, the committee and I have, have talked about the last couple of years.
Right.
All right. Uh, so Dee and, uh, Marlo, do you have any other further comments or questions on this?
No, I, and we have money in the salt shed, um, we must have money.
Yeah, we have money for, for this specifically set aside already for the whole project. Uh, granted, not everything we'll need for the entire project most likely, but we have money in the, in the trust funds.
So, so what? It won't affect these town, uh, tax really anyway, so. But I think we should do it after all these people spent all this time. I'm for putting in that driveway up to the stone wall and biting the bullet now. It's not gonna get any cheaper in years to come.
Mm-hmm. Um, so I guess, uh, it looked, so Dee, it sounds like you are in favor of having the engineering done for the road and the drainage, but not the second driveway? Is that my correct understanding?
I would like to see that at least get in there, yes. And if the state is gonna do the second driveway, I mean, I didn't realize the state does anything like that, so.
And Marlo, it sounds like you are against all of it, or has that changed any from the discussion? I don't see her in my view. Maybe she's muted.
In my, sorry, my dogs were running around.
Yeah.
Not the kids, the dogs, right? So no, yes, I am not, um, for spending money on engineering the road as I have, um, plenty of faith in, in, um, you know, in a ten percent grade, that's, that's not a crazy. And, um, but I do see probably the need of when we get up top to build the, the salt shed. You know, that there probably will be some engineering costs up there, but building the actual road, um, I'm not, I'm against the ten or fifteen thousand dollars to be spent.
Okay, so I'm going to suggest then that, uh, since this is set up as a work with, uh, the town, that the salt shed committee go back and ask them what the pricing would be expected to be for only the two portions without the extra driveway. Because even if we were all in favor of doing so, we wouldn't be able to approve a specific dollar amount for you at this meeting. Um, I personally, uh, am in favor of the engineering for the road, not because I have, don't have faith in Emmett. I believe he would do it great and it wouldn't be a problem. But, uh, I do like that the sign off, uh, would be coming from an engineering firm for something of this magnitude and length of time that the town would be looking at. Uh, and so also, please ask and make sure that part of that pricing is their certified sign off and what their liability would be since they are inspecting and signing off on it.
In the, in the timeframe, if we're gonna spend the money on it.
And that, I just, I, I'm gonna throw one other thing out there. Folks can do it the way you want, but the safety building is a separate project than the sand shed project. And it's already been brought to my attention, just pre-warning that it's gotta come from separate money, two separate projects, two separate monies, because I, I know that it's gonna end up being a, uh, uh, whatever's down the road. So, um, for what little bit it's gonna cost to have them separated out, it's the same project, but different money. Um, I, I just think it would be wise to do it that way. I think it would just save the select board uh, a couple of slivers when they sat down.
That makes sense because we would have to take them from the appropriate funding, uh, funds that both would have fees and, uh, stuff set aside. So the lump sum of ten thousand, if they could tell us, I mean, for example, if it's, let's say, seven thousand or eight thousand in the new one without the extra driveway, if they could tell us what the split is for how much is for the road, how much is for the drainage, uh, because we'll need that to be able to approve it from given funds if we approve that.
Yeah, I'm sure, I'm sure that we can do that. Um, you know, since, since there is money in the account specifically for this though, Dave, I was really hoping that the board could give us the overhead, the, the okay tonight and that we could find that we could get that information for you, um, regarding, uh, you know, which, how much for which project? And specifically, you know, what their sign off would cost if anything more. Um, since hopefully we're all, while we're mostly agreed that we need engineering on this first part. Um, you know, you know as well as I do, I mean, if the, the select board's not gonna meet for another two weeks, that's gonna delay it at least by two weeks.
Um, I'm gonna take it upon myself to contact them and, uh, with these two caveats, the driveway and the breaking it into, um, two, two estimates.
Okay.
Thank you, Craig. So I, I think that is worth doing because we're going to need to, to know that to actually approve the, the dollar amounts anyway. So, um, we do. Uh, unfortunately, Dana, did we actually end up with our tax warrant? Or are we going to have to have a special meeting upcoming shortly anyway?
No, you, I have the tax warrant for you.
Oh.
As of five fifteen this afternoon.
Okay. Well, I, I was expecting worse news on that, and then maybe we could have combined these. Um, uh, Dee and Marlo, uh, obviously we have differing opinions here on the way that we handle it. I don't personally see a way to make the motion to do this can, with contingent, you know, upon a, a dollar amount, since we don't have a dollar amount. Um, do either of you or Dana see an appropriate way to, to do that, to record our, our feelings and findings? Or do we, do we need to wait for that?
Well, I don't know if the committee has any dollar amounts on that or, or estimates on that. The only thing we could do is up to a certain amount, I suppose, if they had any idea. I don't know.
Well, I mean, they've given, they've given us ten thou, fourteen thousand five hundred for the, the outside amount of money they would need to do all three projects. So if we're not going to have them do the driveway.
Yeah.
Um, it's gonna, it's gonna be less than that. So if we were talking about there being the possibility of it being more money, I could understand that. But it's, it's actually, Craig will find out how much less money it's going to be leaving off the driveway section.
And Chris, when you say three items, you're meaning the driveway and then you're calling drainage one of the items?
The, the drainage in the back of the safety building.
Okay.
Yeah. And then, and then the drive, so there's three projects, you know, the, the driveway up, the driveway out to Battle Street, and then the drainage behind the safety building.
Okay.
The only thing I would hate to put it off and, and I know things get busy, Emmett will be busy and all that. And, and I hate to keep putting it off until later on. I mean, things just seem to get worse in this, in this, um, in this whole state really with people doing things, wanting things to be done and, um, so that's what, that makes me kinda nervous because we do need to move that salt shed.
Mm-hmm.
So that's my big thing.
Yeah, I don't wanna put it off either. Um, Barbara made a comment in chat saying her microphone's not working, but could we approve a not to exceed ten thousand dollar expenditure? Um, and if everything were coming out of one fund, I think we could easily do that sort of thing. Uh, but not knowing the split, but knowing that it has to come from two different funds, I don't know that there's a good way to do that. Dana, do you have a, an idea here?
Well, I wish I had a good way to do it.
Well, I wish I had a good way to do it. Um, but if you were to go along with the idea of expending of approving an expenditure not to exceed a certain amount, at some point, you're going to have to make motions to cover that expense from the appropriate trust fund. So at this time, I don't think you need necessarily um uh pinpoint the trust fund that you're withdrawing it from.
Okay. So a motion would look something to the effect of uh for engineering not to exceed $10,000 for the road access to the salt shed location and drainage uh for it and the backside of the safety building to come from appropriate funds upon actual quote approval. I like, because we're we're looking at this at this time with not really the the full set of information. So like, is that the way that we would do it?
I I I don't want to butt in here, but I I work with Phil pretty close on stuff at the firehouse. You you um where would that money come from for the engineer? What where do you have that money hidden that um? I mean, it's gonna be four grand anyways. If it's 10 to 10 and four to break it up, three, four grand, what would you take that out of, Dana?
Um, I believe that the idea is to use the trust fund that is set up for the salt shed for this funding.
Can it's two different projects.
Yeah, the salt shed trust fund can do the road. Uh, the there would probably be something for the safety building, but we probably have that earmark for other things for the drainage portion. And so that's a second consideration.
Yeah, sorry, I didn't understand your question.
I just don't know where the money would come from to pay the engineer right at the moment. And anything to do with the safety building.
Well, it would come from the same pile of money, Emmett, that we were going to use to repair that pave that pavement area, that parking area.
Didn't get voted.
Two years ago.
There's no money.
Yeah, that got voted down. There wasn't money for that.
Uh, it it didn't get voted down because there wasn't money. It it got voted down for other reasons. So there's there's money there, Steve.
So that the the problem with that is when it got voted down, it was a warrant article to appropriate the money to do it. And so the money never got appropriated. It both got voted down and did not have the money appropriated in that set of taxes. Right. So we do not have the money from that.
Hmm, there's no money for engineer in that project unless somebody can pull it out of their hat. I got it uh somewhere that I don't know about.
So Steve, in the in the safety building budget, is there is there no money there that can be used?
I'll have to look at it, but I don't believe there is. That budget is tight all the way around. Um, I'll look through it, but I don't I don't recall there being any slush fund anywhere.
Yeah, I don't expect that we would have any money in a budget. There there may or may not be some money in uh that could be used from something like a public safety building maintenance. Uh, that would be about the only fund I can think of off the top of my head that may be legally allowed to be used for this. Um, and and that kind of is is the issue here with going beyond what uh the initial mandate would have been and why I don't want to just say, let's go ahead and try to move forward uh without the the actual breakdown and being able to figure out where funds that come from.
As far as I know, the maintenance is a $200 line item.
I think we also have a a fund. Let me check if I can find it.
Isn't there impact fees?
Yeah, that's a good idea, Roy.
There are impact fees for improvements. Um Dana, do you have the latest or or a reasonably recent set of how much of that is for the safety building? Because I know.
I don't have that. Yeah, I don't have that in front of me, Dave. I we have a recent figure, but I don't have it in front of me. Sorry.
Okay.
It and if I may speak up, uh I think if you cut it at 10, $10,000 for this project, the engineering, I think you're gonna be cutting it very, very close if and you could be under budgeting it. I don't think that second driveway is gonna be $5,000.
Yeah, I would.
On the engineering.
Two to 2,500 worth of it is just the second driveway.
True truthfully, I I think I'd go with a maximum of, we'll say, 13,000. Okay, on on the thing, and then you you take a look to see where you can get the money for the portion of engineering for the safety building.
I apologize if I'm being quiet. I'm trying to find the uh information on the funds. Please go ahead.
No, I'm just wondering what Roy was taught. I know the impact fees should be, I would almost think that it could be used on any kind of project like this for the better of the town. And I think we have quite a bit of money in there, but um but I now were you talking um for just the driveway or you're talking about both things, Roy?
The the drain. I'm talking the project, okay, except for the second driveway.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Okay, I'm talk the main driveway going up.
Yeah.
That study and then the safety building drainage. Okay, uh, and then them signing off, possibly coming out, doing the inspections and signing off.
Okay.
That's just my train of thought. That's all.
Well, I that I mean, the reason that we're doing the engineering is to get the stamp of approval, right?
So i i and then if something it and I I have to agree with Emmett. If something does happen 10 years down the road, it and you know, the engineer doesn't stand behind us or whatnot, at least we, the town did the due diligence and throw Emmett under the bus because there was a problem.
Mm hmm.
You know, we had we had engineering stuff done, and I agree on the safety building. They put it up and we had problems. We have problems out on that ramp. We I'm waiting for someone to suit it down for breaking the ankle.
So looking at the the funds, the one that I was thinking of was the highway building maintenance expendable trust fund, but that only has almost nothing in it and wasn't funded uh last year either. Um, however, there is the Public Safety Building Capital Reserve Fund. Um, I believe that was being built up to be able to handle the um replacement of heating and cooling, et cetera, in the building and or uh fixing the roof. Um, there is money in that. I don't know if it could also be used for this and additional put on a warrant for next year to go back into it. Um Dana or the others, do you happen to know if that is a legitimate use for that fund?
The Public Safety Building Capital Reserve Fund?
Yes.
Um, I would I would have to check with the trustees to refresh my memory of how what was how it was set up.
I think Teresa was here, wasn't she?
Yeah.
I thought I saw her at some point.
She was here earlier.
I do not see her now. Oh, and and Corliss also pointed out that we have the Public Safety Building Capital Reserve Fund, which I just mentioned. I think while I would like to move the project along uh in order to be able to make a motion, I think there would be so many contingencies that that would be a challenge to make an appropriate motion that would mean much. Um, so I think I'd like to see the the return with the the pieces broken out uh for the drainage and the the road so that we can approve them flat out and from the particular funds, since they're looking for an upfront payment anyway from the the literature that they're showing.
And and a guarantee on the stamp that they're gonna give us at the end.
Mm hmm. Yeah, we want to know for sure that they're gonna do that before we put out the money, since I don't see that listed in the the pamphlet either.
And how long it lasts for?
Mm hmm.
Because as like you said, the safety building already was engineered and they've had issues.
Yeah, so so Craig was gonna go ask uh them to update that and um, I'm assuming that they're actually going to be responsive, like good engineers would be. Uh, and so we do we want to set aside a brief amount of time to look at this uh later in the week or after we hear back from Craig, set up a a work session? And I mentioned that uh because um, of course, next week, sorry, two weeks from now, which would normally be our next meeting is Memorial Day, so we won't be having it.
Hmm, that's true.
Hmm. I I think we should set up a meeting after we get some information.
Okay.
I'm fine with that.
All right, that sounds good. Um, so I'm sorry that we couldn't just okay everything for you, but uh trying to find the funds and where it all comes from and uh does make that a bit of a challenge at this time. Hopefully, we can get something settled next time. Um, are there any other closing questions or comments from Chris or Craig and the committee?
No.
All right. So.
All right. Well, thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for all of the work that you folks have put in as well.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so moving on to our next section, that is our old business section of the agenda. And so first is town properties cleanup and bidding, and I believe that will go to Dana.
Um, we have a couple of town properties that need um some attention, and they are Nine Pennacook Circle and the other is 710 White Plains Road. Um, part of our desire this year is to sell those properties and but they do have a lot of hazards on them um that the town would have some liability on. So um, I would like to have the board, if we could go out and get some pricing on cleanup on both of those properties. One of them, I've heard that the person still has some personal items there, and I was gonna talk to the police department about that, about how they can get them. So that is the what we're proposing for the cleanup um part of this.
Okay.
And so I guess I need to know um what you need from me further as far as other than going and getting soliciting some uh dollar amounts that we can talk about.
I would be all in favor of uh you going getting dollar amounts for us to talk about. Uh, I don't know if the others are as well. Um, but where would we be looking to get the money from for doing this?
Well, that's an excellent question. Um, and it's a normal question we always have. Depending on what we're talking about for money, there may be some room in the town uh Town Hall Maintenance Fund. There may be some wiggle room in that. Um, and again, if it was, and I'm hoping it's not as much as all that, but um we did pay for some cleanup on 18 Mont Vernon Drive. I think it costs us somewhere in the vicinity of five to $1,000, 500 to $1,000. So but there are some, we may, when we get into it, it might be more. Um, I guess if I had idea of prices, I'd know better where to uh look for the funding.
I know we don't. Oh, go ahead, Dave. Sorry.
Oh, no, no, it's fine. Go ahead, Dee.
Um, the White Plains Road one, is that the mobile home that's is that?
Yes, yes, yeah.
I thought we are just gonna tear that down and get rid of the whole thing.
That's what I'm that's what I'm talking about. Yeah, getting getting rid of all that.
That's what we need to do.
Making it go away. Yeah.
Right, you can't, because you can't. I know that, like, didn't we get a letter? Somebody wanted to buy it or something or think about it or I think we just got to get rid of that whole mess. But I I always think, I don't know if, well, I suppose we could get pricing, but I thought we talked about having the road agent do that.
Well, again, I'd have to speak with with the road agent.
Yeah.
And I haven't. Yeah.
Okay.
And so um, there's that one, and then the other one that you mentioned, Nine Pennacook is, of course, fire damage. The I would hazard a guess that the fire damage we could cover uh from contingency a fund, because that's definitely an unexpected event. Um but I don't really want to try and and spend that either if we have a better place to take it from. Um but yes, uh, I guess let's just ask the everybody on the board uh if they want you to go get the information and then tell us where we might be able to get it, and then we can.
There may be an offsetting revenue for for the fire damage.
Mm hmm.
Oh, you mean like insurance, you mean?
That's right, yeah.
So yeah, cuz that could be helped. I mean, that's that not that's not a teardown. Evidently, that can be.
Correct.
Redone.
Right.
Okay.
Right.
Uh, so I am in favor of him going and getting prices and telling us where he may be able to get them. Uh, Dee, how about you?
So am I. Good idea.
And Marlo?
Yeah, I'm I'm in favor of getting some prices just to help us make the decision either.
All right.
Tear down.
Yeah, so let's go ahead and uh suggest that. We don't need an actual motion or vote for that.
No.
Um, do you have other town properties uh to bring up? I believe there's some for bid.
There there is another similar situation to what we had previously talked about, and we talked about this a few meetings ago, and it's the properties out on when um Windsor Terrace um that and a butter had brought to our attention would like to purchase. Um it was two lots at that time. There were three lots in a row that the town owned. Um, we have merged those into one lot now. Um, I have on SharePoint added, and it didn't go into this. It's a separate item, but it's the total tax loss revenue is 3,100 on those. Um, this is a total.
Are you mean on the wait, which one?
I'm I'm on uh Windsor Terrace.
Okay, now I see it.
Yeah, it's I'm sorry, if I just finished that this afternoon. So that is that's a total of just under two acres with the three lots. Um, again, I have not, I think I would need to, what I learned on our other conversation, I really should speak with Emmett to see if there's any sort of drainage needs or something like that on those on that lot, but um maybe if I did a similar thing to what I'm gonna do with the others and check about a butters and bring to you a bid proposal at your next meeting.
That's a good idea. There's no house. Are there no any house around those three lots?
There is not. It's just uh they are vacant lots.
So it's three, three lots together. We merged together for two acres.
Right, about just under two acres, yes.
Wow, that's pretty good.
Yeah, that feels pretty lake-sized lots, so that that does actually quite good for three lots.
Yeah, right.
They're kind of on the side of a cliff, but um.
Hey, you can build a house anywhere, let me tell you.
Except there's no road, so.
Yeah. There goes my sales pitch. Okay, I will do that for the next one. Thank you. Um, that's all I had on that. That's all I had on that.
All right. So the next one is also Dana, which is Town Hall Maintenance Water Pump.
I think you you covered it, Dave, in your um project status. Last week, the water pump um decided to go south on us and we had to replace the water pump. Fortunately, we do have funds in the trust funds to cover that. It's twenty seven hundred dollars for the water pump replacement. Um, we were able to get some maintenance issues that needed to be done at the town office. Um, I would like to look into three, the other possibilities of the painting of the building, fixing, repairing of the back staircase that goes out of the Grange Hall. And also I'd like to do something about the landscaping uh and all the sand that's in in front of the building. So those are three that I'd like to get some prices on.
And when you say the sand in front of the building, what are you envisioning?
In front of the library, there is a mound of sand or gravel that has been built up over many years and is on the lawn. And also, basically, and I don't know what it would entail to to get rid of it, probably just a tractor to move it away.
Okay, thanks, buddy.
I do have a volunteer who is interested in doing a little landscaping for us.
Volunteer work is great.
Yeah, the the price is good. So it's not, I it's not a huge project. I mean, it's just, just a little.
Okay, so you're you're looking at cleanup, not actually changing what's there.
I'm not looking at changing anything. I'm just looking at cleanup. Yeah.
All right. Does any of the other, the rest of the board have any questions on this?
Not me.
All right, uh, well, go ahead and
I'll go ahead.
some information.
Look into that. Okay, thank you.
Okay, uh, moving right along, uh, the, and there's other Town Hall Maintenance stuff that you wanted to cover?
That's all I had. Thanks.
Okay, and make sure that we've got, because I mentioned it already, but make sure we've also got the uh the LED safety lights.
Oh, the emergency lights. Yes, I have that on my list.
Uh, so moving right along, uh, White Plains Road Project Update. Um, do we have any additional better news than what I already mentioned?
You've already mentioned the best news we have. I wish we had other news, but we are monitoring that and pushing that as best we can to get an application into DES as soon as possible.
So there were four butters that we were looking for that right of way uh from, and have we gotten, I know we've gotten verbal agreements from several through various people. Have we gotten any signed?
I have not seen any signed. Um, I have spoke, the engineer has um assured me that she has gotten agreement on two of the four. Um, and I have said it's important that we get a signed copy um soon. Uh, I spoke with a landowner on the other side, and he agreed that he would sign it. I've not seen it yet. I spoke with him last Thursday. And we're waiting um for another landowner who has um and I'll follow up with that. They have the paperwork.
Dana, what happens if they they say they're not gonna sign it?
Well, it would make it difficult. I think we'd have to redo the plans because DES would not approve it unless we unless that happened. So I'm hoping that doesn't happen, but that is a possibility.
There's nothing like eminent domain or anything like that.
Well, there is eminent domain, but that is not a quick thing either. It takes a long time and it's quite expensive legalized, legal wise. Plus, it's not very popular.
No, right. And nor does anybody ever want to do that. Don't get me wrong.
Yeah, I know. I'm just, yeah.
It's been a long time.
Yeah.
All right. So uh I think we actually just lost somebody that we wanted for our next topic, uh, which is the right-of-way excavation policy. Uh, but I believe Russ can speak to that to start with. I mean, he'll come back.
No. So I did a little research on this. I asked NHMA if we were able to do it. And they responded. I put their response in SharePoint. And under RSA two thirty six, nine, ten, and eleven gives us, makes it unlawful to do anything in the town's right-of-way without first receiving permission from the Select Board or the road agent. Ten allows us to make them put up a bond to cover the damages or repairs if we need to do them. And oh, RSA two thirty six eleven says that they have to restore it to equal or better condition than when they started. So we have the authority to do it. I received a template from NHMA. I adjusted the template and it's currently submitted to Emmett to look at because we need to adjust how it's gonna work for Webster, because I believe the one I got was from Boskwin or Bo, never mind, it's from Bo. And we don't have the same departments they do, so me and Emmett need to work out how it's gonna happen in our town. So that's where we are at the moment, and Emmett needs to work on some of the specifications for road quality and the type of, and how it gets put back, basically.
Russ, do I understand you correctly, there are RSAs that you cannot do work in the towns right away without the permission of the Select Board?
Or the road agent.
Or the road agent. So what what you're trying to do here is just formalize um by having better control and people um explaining what they're going to do. Um, we've had one incident, someone has gotten into the road and done some things. Um, do you know of an incident of more than one or just one?
Well, this was the one that I was made aware of. I'm sure Emmett has other stories for it, but as he's not here right now, that's the only one I'm aware of.
And I think the other part of this is that the town also can ask a bond for people working in the towns right away in the event it's not put back the way the road agent specifies.
Correct.
Okay. Uh, any questions about this? All right. Uh, when do you expect that we may see some of these updates to actually enact said policies?
I said I need to wait for Emmett's response. I can ask him about it tomorrow. But I think given that it's his busy season right now with doing stuff with the roads, I don't know how much time he'll be able to help me with it without talking to him.
Okay, so so that that we're basically just looking at the specification section, and you've already covered the
Right.
of like
And there's
departments, et cetera.
Yeah, and there's certain procedural things, like we can't, we don't have a highway department. So stuff is gonna have to go through Town Hall, and I need to talk to Emmett to see what stuff he wants to go through Town Hall and what stuff he wants to keep in his camp.
You probably could speak with him though within the next week or so.
Correct.
You know, you know, trying to, so we could bring it back as soon as possible.
Right.
Okay. Uh, any other comments or questions on this before we move on?
No. Good.
All right. So moving on, now we're into new business, which is opening Town Hall for renting. I believe Dana and Russ want to speak on this.
I guess we're just, um, we've had a few queries on when the Town Hall will be available to rent again. Um, so I'm just throwing, we're just throwing that out to see if you have any thoughts on it. Yeah, I guess that's basically.
Um, okay, um, I guess I'll go first and then let the others chime in and tell me how wrong I am. But the uh I I would be in favor of allowing the hall to be rented, provided that whatever policy we do or don't have uh at whatever time is followed. And of course, at this point in time, that would be the the COVID nineteen protocols and policies that we have in place.
I would, I would say that we should open it up and 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 or maybe we're gonna look at our policies too, because everything's opening up, so.
The policy is actually the next item, so.
Okay, well, maybe it's backwards because, you know, I mean, it's time to get back to normal, so. I, yeah, I would say, let's get it open and let's 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 people get back to their lives.
I'd like to see it opened myself also. Maybe we should do the COVID nineteen protocol first and then go back.
Yeah, right. A little backwards, right, Dee?
Yeah.
Well, so so it seems like we all agree that we should open Town Hall for for renting, and then we should also discuss the COVID nineteen. So let's go ahead and discuss that. That's our next item. Uh, I believe to speak to this is a combination of Dana and Roy.
I think that my my part of it is I just want to know what the board wants to do. It's uh, it's a very confusing state we're in right now. Wear a mask, don't wear a mask. Naturally, want to be as safe as possible. And I guess I'm just looking for the board to kind of give us some guidance, and I know Roy has some thoughts.
All right to speak?
Please.
Okay. Right now, everyone's in turmoil over this. CDC is coming out with changes, you know, within twenty-four hours. You know, all of a sudden you hear something new on the news. My strong suggestion in talking with other health officers, my personal thought along with some of theirs is I would keep the mask mandate for the Town Hall, you know, for your offices and all the meetings until the end of June. See how things start to go, and then on July first, everything's going good, it's opened up. I would suggest that you could start yourself by having the open meetings the middle of next month. You know, following your COVID protocol. You could meet upstairs, you know, like you've done in the past and so forth. You don't have Zoom, because what is it, Russ? If if the governor comes out with his emergency decree hit is stopped, we can't have Zooms anymore, right, Russ?
Yep.
You know, it
Anything that is not already scheduled would have to not be.
You know, so uh so you would have, right now, you're not scheduled for a Zoom for two weeks. Well, that that's Memorial Day, so you know, it would be the day after. But my thought process, I keep the mask in place until the end of June, open everything up the first of July. Uh, I believe it was this morning on the news, they had us listed as seven active cases, and then tonight at six, it was five. Have you got any word on that, chief?
You're muted, Steve.
Yes, that's exactly right. Um, there was seven, now there's only five, but out of the five, it's two households, so.
Yeah.
It's family members.
Okay, and and I do know several people in town that do not want to get the shot. There's no way they want the shot, period. I can't tell you who they are. It it's medical confidentiality, the whole thing, but but that's my thought process. To keep yourselves, to keep all our committee people safe, I would keep the mask mandate till the end of June. You know, and then have the potential opening date of July first for renting the Town Hall and so forth. And as the board, I would suggest to you, you know, don't throw it to the uh other committees, you make your rule, you know, whether you want to have people wear masks or not. I'd say you you're the town fathers and mothers, sorry. You're the town people, you make the decision.
That that's, that's my thought.
Thank you. Um, so I don't want to get too mixed up with many, many topics.
Yeah.
Uh, but I do want to also point out that moving from the virtual to the in-person meeting uh does change the way and how we can do things like streaming, for example, to be able to make it up to YouTube uh instead of only Town Hall streams, uh which we're kind of hoping that we can save money by not needing since YouTube is free. And so there are a few other questions there as far as us immediately moving to in-person meetings. Uh, for Select Board, we of course already are have and can use Town Hall streams. Uh, we're already paying for it. Um, other boards, however, are not, and we've uh been discussing trying to get more and more uh boards doing streaming or at least posting after the fact. Um, so that is another topic that we should also look at before jumping on the everybody meet in person thing. Uh, but now back to the the topic at hand, which is the COVID nineteen uh protocol discussions. Obviously, Marlo has said she thinks we should basically ditch it. I don't know if uh Roy's comments have changed her mind any. I'll I'll let her go first because I don't want to speak for her.
I like the word ditch it. Gee, um, no, I just, I'm, I look at it as what the 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 state's gotta go back to work, the courts are opening back up. I I don't know why. I mean, I guess the whole streaming thing is kind of what you're saying. I I'm not gonna put words in your mouth in the sense that you're but I think you're worried about, you want to keep these, all these meetings as transparent to everybody, and you're concerned if we rush going back, then then that can't happen for what, there's not enough. I'm not quite sure that I understand why the the board can stream the Select Board, but the other.
What we pay Town Hall streams, which is a hundred fifty dollars a month, allows us to do two streams per month, which is the two Select Board meetings.
Oh, yeah.
So if we wanted to do anything else, it would be an additional large chunk of money.
And what's gonna change as of June first, I mean, July first?
For what?
Streaming.
Uh, so for, hopefully by then we will have another uh option presented that we can make a choice on and either sign off on or decide that, well, we're just not gonna be able to do it that way and.
Oh, do we have some um feelers out there to see what, and who do we do that through? Is that like through your provider, like TDS?
Uh, Town Hall Streams is their own website and entity. Uh, they've actually installed the camera that's upstairs in the uh meeting hall with the little switch on the wall to to turn it on.
And so how much is that? So two meetings is a hundred and fifty dollars. What is another, how much is another meeting? Another hundred and fifty dollars?
I I don't have an actual figure because I haven't uh talked with them about adding meetings. We've been hoping that we can get rid of the hundred fifty and make it nothing uh with like a one-time fee purchase of equipment to do it straight to live stream on YouTube.
YouTube, yeah.
So that's the kind of thing that we're hoping for. Um, but again, I I don't want to co-opt the whole uh COVID thing. I I just wanted to bring that up as a timing of meetings as opposed to the the COVID and or Town Hall opening for renting issues.
Yeah. Well, I'd hate to hold that up, the Town Hall renting issue because of, if we want to try to follow follow the same protocol, because we don't have the live streaming yet for other committees. So, yeah, my my vote would still be to open it up.
Dee, what do you think about all of it?
Um, I just wonder about the people that clean the Town Hall. How would they feel about that if we have opened it up? I mean, I personally am an old-fashioned person, and I like to see people person to person. But I also know Roy Fanjoy forever, and he's, I I'd like to listen to the health officer part because he's that kind of guy, but um but I I I like to see the Town Hall opened up too, and I'd like to see meetings in pub, in person and so I'm different for that type of thing.
Okay. Um, and Roy, I know that you were commenting about the COVID nineteen protocol. Uh, did you also have thoughts on the opening of Town Hall?
Right now.
Right now, it, it's. A lot of it, if you look at it, it's being left up to the individual in the companies and stuff like that. Okay? Excuse me. You go to most of the stores, they're still requiring masks, the whole bit. I would say if, if you open it up. I didn't, I. I'd still suggest that the mask be worn until the end of June. See how, see how things go for the next six months.
Uh, sorry, I was referring to, oh, the, the rent, being able to rent.
Oh, yes. I, I, I think we should be able to rent. You know, I, um, I, I can't pick a date out of the hat. Um, I, I picked July first. You know, out, out of the hat. I think that would give us six weeks to see how the rest of the state and everything else is going along. And, you know, if we start to see things pick up again. Then we have to stop and reevaluate, but I, I look at. You know, June thirtieth is. It's the day before Independence Day. July first is our new Independence Day. You know, barring no major complications, outbreaks, any of that stuff. So I, 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 I agree with Marlo. We, we have to start to get back to normal. But I think that, you know, being. Watchful and everything. I think the next six weeks is going to tell us a lot.
So. My suggestion to the board and then we can, we can discuss about it is that we decide that we are opening the town hall for renting with whatever, uh, we have enacted for policies, which currently is the mask mandate. And that we, uh, then. Rather than setting a specific date, uh, although Roy has given us good reasons for that. Uh, or just getting rid of it, even though I'm. Hate the masks myself. Uh, the. I think it would be. Unwise to try and just make the decision without us getting input from all of the employees that are in town hall and affected by it. Daily. Um, I know we've got two of them here, but, uh, I think we should. Uh, hear from all of them before making that decision. As much as I would love to just get rid of stuff, uh, so. What, uh?
So Dee, can I have a quick question? Just so you were saying. Um, what do, I, I guess I, I guess I didn't. I heard it, an opinion and I'm not saying that I didn't respect that opinion, but I didn't really hear a good reason to not get back to normal. Was there something that I, that you felt? That he was saying that was a good reason, just because there's not the data you'd like to see? Is that what you're saying?
So for, for me, the reasoning for not just getting rid of the mask mandate, uh, is that part of the reason for a mask mandate and the reason that we put it in place in the first place. Uh, was not just, uh, CDC guidelines. But also for the protection and the. Feeling of safety for all of the workers in the building. Um, it was very, very heavily pushed by several of the workers in the building and. Well. Well, we can look at different data sets for, a- and for example, the CDC saying that, uh, masks aren't needed if you're vaccinated. No one can ask if someone is vaccinated or not. Um, and at the same time, that, uh, doesn't change whether people feel comfortable with it and I really don't want to make our. Uh, town hall employees or, or similar. Feel uncomfortable being able to do their jobs and start showing reason to not show up for the public. So that's why I would want to talk with them first.
Okay. And then, then, and it'll be good to hear from, from Russ and Dana, but. Let's say on the town hall front, usually if somebody's renting that, that's, um, a gathering of some kind. And they already, you know, feel comfortable, you know, a lot of, that having a gathering and wearing masks is not. I personally would, wouldn't want that to be part of my gathering. Man, I kind of get what you're saying with inside the, the town hall that there you could. Employees could still wear their masks if they feel. That they want to, you know, we could, we wouldn't make it that they couldn't, they didn't have to wear them, but. You know, with, with everything else, you know, especially all the state. You know, employees having to go back to work and, you know, all the other stuff opening that, that's all I'm trying to say, but. We'll let you go on to the question. To the two employees we do have, um. Part of our meeting.
Uh, Dee, what do you, what do you think about all of this?
Oh, I hate masks, but, uh, other than that, I'm sick of them myself, but I, um. I don't want to rush into it either. So I would take Roy's advice really. But that's. Um, have we heard from many people that I would do, have we heard that a lot of people want to rent the town hall? Have you heard anything like that?
We've had a few queries on it, but I wouldn't say a lot, no.
I mean, part time's coming up after July, so. If they're still in school.
Yeah. So, so the, the thing to, to note is that if we open the town hall for renting, we open the town hall for renting. That does not disqualify. Them and anything that is done there from the policy that is enacted for the government buildings that we have, which is the public safety building and the town hall. Currently, that includes a mask mandate. Uh, so. That's why they are at, while they're related, they're two separate items. And then for the, uh, policy. I think that it would make sense to kind of like, I want to listen to, to Roy because he is our, our health official. At the same time, I understand Marlo's comments and lots of people's frustrations about masks. And that several people have walked into the building and then started saying, I don't need a mask anymore. And so. There's definitely been lots of confusion. Um, and. I think it would behoove us to meet somewhere in the middle to try and get the feedback from the additional town employees and, and town hall workers that we have. And see what they feel. Cause if they're all, hey, we're fine. We don't care. Uh, then. At that point, it's a little easier to say, well. Maybe Roy might even go along with saying that that might be acceptable. Uh, but if. You know, half of them are saying we're uncomfortable. We don't feel safe about it. Then, then that's a different thing and I don't want to give them a, a bad working environment either. So.
Sense, that makes sense. I agree.
So can we get, um. I was going to say, can we get them in, into a meeting, but, uh, that's a ways away. And I don't want to wait for the meeting before we get some of the data. Dana, can you send out something to them requesting their. I guess feelings and, and, uh, input on this and if they would have a problem with lifting the mask mandates or not. And then we can provide all of those statistics at our net, next meeting and then make it a decision and see if Roy has changed his mind by then.
I could, yes.
Does that sound like a reasonable compromise?
Yes, that's good.
How about you, Marlo? Does that sound reasonable?
Yeah, that's, yeah. I mean, what is Dana and Russ? What have you guys heard?
Well, I think there are some employees at the work of the townhouse that are still very concerned about it. About having, um, masks on. And I think it's, it goes, I mean, I'm very confused myself because here we're hearing mask, mask, mask. And this last weekend, all of a sudden it's great. As long as you're vaccinated, you can do whatever you want. And I, I, I hope we can. But we, I, I guess I don't, I don't have a real feeling that people really need to be masked. If I feel uncomfortable, I can put my mask on. I'm pretty good at taking care of myself. Um, so, and I think that. Everyone should be as well, but I will cer- certainly ask, I do know there are some other employees that may not agree with my opinion. Strange as it sounds.
The, the big thing is you don't want people face to face. You know, you still want to give that space between each other. To protect yourself. Look at the baseball team. I don't know which one it was, what they, they had seven and they were all vaccinated. And they had seven members as positive for the virus and one was showing symptoms. Because we have the shot, the shot is great. Now, if I get the COVID. Chances of me going to the hospital are down in the very low single digits. And I won't have lasting effects. Now Dana, he might not have had the shot. He gets it. He can end up having problems the rest of his life. You know, Hanover has a new wing up there. They're just watching a lot, what they call the long haulers. It's having lung problems and other problems. So I, you know, like, like I said, right now I'm looking. Things are opening up and I want to see the numbers that they come up with in the next. You know, four, four weeks, six, and we're looking at six weeks. For my date of the end of June.
Yeah, it's been very nice to see the, the overall numbers going down quite a lot in New Hampshire over the past days. Hopefully it keeps happening.
I, I, I hope so too. What I'm afraid of is it's going to start to go back up come October and November.
Well, we have a lot of people coming into the state too for summers. Vacation homes and all that. You don't know where they're coming from or what they have been involved with, so.
And, and as silly as it sounds, vaccine vacations are now a thing. Come to get your vaccine. So. Yes, that's true. Um, all right. So do we need a motion to open town hall or? Are we for the renting or are we good with?
I don't think you need a motion, no.
Okay.
I think you've got to pick a date. That you want or something that you have to think about. You know, where, and come up with. Your policy.
Uh, yeah. So the, the policy will be looked at, at the next meeting. Uh, after we get feedback from the town hall employees, uh, and other workers, as some of them are elected, uh, and, uh, we'll hear back from you at that meeting as well. Of course, that's four weeks out, so. Um, we'll see how things are at that point because unfortunately two weeks from now we did, we have Memorial Day, so we won't be meeting.
So you won't meet the day after Memorial Day?
I don't believe we have that scheduled.
We have it now.
Okay.
Yeah. So. That appears to be where that, that would be the date. Um, but our policy is written that it is in effect until rescinded, so.
Well, that's the middle of June. Yeah.
We could meet earlier in June. Um, we could rearrange the schedule. Because I think the second week is the four, is the middle of June, the fourteenth.
Let's see. So the thirty-first of this month is actually Memorial Day. And then the seventh is the first Monday in June. And then, whi- which reminds me, uh, there's the every other, which is what I've typically seen for the select board. But I thought we had a department head thing listed as like the first Monday or something like that, which of course then makes that different.
So I think every other works until you get to a situation like this and then it, it skews it.
So do we expect that the seventh or the fourteenth, which is Flag Day, uh, are actually our next meeting?
I think we have the fourteenth, but I would suggest maybe we. Repost our meeting schedule and announce it and go with. And we really should do something and rather than every other, something like the first and third Monday of the month or something along those lines. So when you have a month with five Mondays or a holiday. And it's certainly not unheard of is, is choosing another night to have a regular meeting. Again, we just have to announce it and post it and get the word out.
So, so I would suggest let's just have a Tuesday unless that does not fit in other people's schedule.
With me.
So June first?
Yeah.
We could do that or we could stick with the Mondays, which I know works for the. Uh, chiefs, if we wanted to do Monday, the seventh and do it like a department head meeting. Cause that's not too far off what it would normally be other than we're just. Move, shifting a, a week in there, then we would have another normal one afterwards.
If not, we can still do a department head meeting on the first.
I, I don't know what the others, uh, like Emmett's availability is on, on Tuesday evenings, but. But I would be open to either.
Me as well. Well, if you tell us which one you'd like, we'll, um, work with it.
You do June first, then the fourteenth, it would be right back to the schedule of the, the selectmen's. Although I like, I like Dana's idea of the like. A permanent, not every other me, uh, Monday, but the, you know, the first and third or second and fourth or something like that, but that's something for another day. But I, I would think you should.
Well, if we wanted to do the first and third, we, we could say that and then that would start us right in with Monday, the seventh. And we have plenty of time to post all of that and, and to change those things. So if we want to do that. We can do that now and then just make it easy going forward.
Oh, that's all right with you folks. It's all right with me. That's an easy, easier to remember.
Yeah, that's fine. I mean.
All right.
I just would hate to hold somebody up because we're, because of a holiday, you know, somebody's trying to get something approved or somebody needs an answer. That's, that's my biggest pro, you know, this, we're trying to. Make sure everybody can do what they need to do and we're, our responsibility is to make sure we can meet to do that. So I mean, I, I, either way, I just want to make sure that we're. You know, we don't want too much time to go by and quite frankly, I. Like to see that, like to see the town hall open up.
Well, so, so we're, well, at least for the renting, we're, we've all said that it is, so they can rent it tomorrow if they want.
I can have my party, yeah.
So I guess, uh, we should as a board, uh, I would move that we. Start having meetings as the first and third Monday of each month.
I'd second that.
At the same six thirty.
Yep.
And, uh, Marlo.
Hi.
Myself, I, Dee.
Hi.
All right. That makes that nice and easy.
Great. Russ and I will work on revising the schedule.
Okay, thank you.
And have it on. And have it on the website.
Russ is good at that too.
And that first one would be the, the department head meeting, just like it has been. Yeah. Okay. Any other discussion that we need here? We, we can move on. All right. Next item is discretionary legal fund for emergencies. Dana, take it away.
Well, this has come up before as far as every time, um. I need to go to the attorney, I need to come to you and ask permission to do that. And especially sometimes it has to wait two weeks. Now I haven't had anything burning and you've been gracious enough to. Um, give me some leeway with the legal work for nine pinnacle circle. Which is, is good, but I didn't know if I realized that in the past, there may have been some problems with people. Go, and of course, when you ever, whenever you call the lawyer, the, the clock is ticking. But, um, I'm wondering if the board might consider a certain limit, um, that I'd have some discretion that I could contact the attorney if I felt it was necessary before a meeting.
To ask a, a question on that. Does this apply to absolutely everything? For example, including welfare or is it only, or is welfare, for example, separate so that, uh, legal questions about that? So that legal questions about that would not be held up by the normal process?
No, that would not. You're right. It would not include welfare. That would, that can, that comes out of another line.
Okay. Any questions from Marlo or Dee here?
No. Sounds like a plan.
And, and what are you thinking for a reasonable way to look at this? Are you looking at it, uh, an amount of time or a? Amount, uh, that seems like a reasonable first interaction, uh, or. Uh, just a let us know after the fact within a certain amount of time, like what, how do you envision this working?
Something that if you were to give me authorization to use maybe two hours of an attorney's time, which equates to just under five hundred dollars. I think that would be enough. And then if it was needing more, then I would speak to you at the next meeting.
I agree with that.
All right. You want to make a motion for that?
Sure. Make a motion to give them the five hundred dollar budget to start out and then they need more, they'll come and see us. I don't think, I don't see as elegant as you, Dave, but that's what he's saying, right?
I'll second that.
All right. Uh, so roll call, Marlo.
Hi.
Myself, I, Dee.
And I.
All right.
Thank you. Unfortunately, we haven't had, uh, this has not been a huge problem, but it just gives us a little leeway. It's something.
Yeah, that would have made, for example, the start of nine pinnacle a bit easier.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, moving right along. Uh, permit application review is our next new business. I believe that is Russ.
That is. So we have two building permits and a temporary occupancy permit for an RV. So the two building permits, one is for the Durgans. And let me pull that up.
And we had them here previously, correct?
We did. So they've completed their building permit application. They've provided us with all the appropriate documents. And that's for lot three, one twenty-one on Battle Street. So we have everything that is required. I looked over the plan. The setbacks look good. And Tom came in as one of his new duties as the building inspector. Reviewed the construction plans and he says they look all set. So we're looking for an approval on that permit.
Okay. And so you mentioned that Tom had already, and to, to clarify the address and location. This is near the top of the hill on Battle Street, near the old town center, approximately two or. Three acres or so off to the side down the hill.
It's like two acres, a little bit. I think it might be a little bit more. I'd have to pull it up on the map.
Correct location?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay. Any questions from Marlo or Dee?
No.
No, I don't.
All right. Having gotten the opinion from our building inspector, I would suggest that we go with that and approve this. And Russ, I believe you have information, so we can make this even easier in the future.
So per the zoning ordinance, we can. Appoint a building inspector once a year, and if we appointed Tom to be the building inspector per the zoning ordinance. We wouldn't have to bring these to the select board anymore. Me and him would both just review the permits and then he could sign off on them.
Well, that sounds like a plan.
Since we've hired him to do that.
Well, and in, in what right would we have to say tonight if Russ said everything's in place? He's, they're meeting every requirement that's needed. We wouldn't even, would we, we wouldn't be able to say, well, no, I don't want them to build there, right?
I mean.
Technically, we could.
They might say, what is your problem? I must assume, you know? So, okay.
All right. So I would move that we accept the building application permit for the Durgans. As uh, suggested by our land use coordinator and building inspector.
Second.
Uh, roll call, Marlo.
Hi.
Myself, I.
Hi.
All right. I would also make a motion that we appoint our building inspect, uh, our code inspector to be our building inspector. Uh, for the period of one year, currently Tom Bay. Uh, to be able to process applications and building permits more efficiently in the future.
Second.
Uh, roll call vote. Okay, Marlo's I, I'm.
Jumped ahead.
He's an I. All right.
Then you don't have to worry about the other two because you can just have Tom sign off on them.
That works too. All right. Are there any, uh, further comments or questions on this?
No.
All right. Moving on to the solar exemption.
So this one's me. Um, I was talking to a resident and I'm reviewing all the solar exemptions this year. As part of my audit for the DRA. So this one came a little early because somebody was asking about the solar exemption, only to find out they already have the solar exemption, even though they never applied for it. So the way it's supposed to work is when a property changes ownerships, they lose the exemption. And this is one of the things that I'm auditing is to make sure that the paperwork is in the correct name. And if not, any directify the situation. However, it's passed the due date to apply for the exemption. And she was already receiving it, I would say for the past five years. So my question before the board is, is do we want her to reapply again in December, which means we'd have to remove the exemption now? Or simply just have her swap out the paperwork? Cause this, we would accept it. After anyway, because the solar panels are there. We're confirmed they're there. She's already, it's already in our assessing system. Which is usually what we look at to see for the approval.
What, what would the, uh, exa- what does the exemption entail?
Hundred percent of the value of the solar.
Oh, she doesn't get taxed on it.
She doesn't get taxed on it.
Okay.
From the assessment, yeah.
Yeah, normally what, so when you install panels, they have a value and that goes into the assessment. And New Hampshire passed, uh, and then, uh, Webster adopted. Uh, the ability to remove that from the assessment price. And so. Once the applications and the paperwork are done, then you don't pay for, uh, taxes on the panels. As a way to encourage investment in renewables.
Got it.
So, and I want to make sure I'm going to be even handed when I do the exemptions. For if I find any other, other like this, I want to make sure I handle them all the same way.
I would suggest to the board. Technically, we should have removed that exemption. Is that right, Russ?
Correct.
Okay, um, it is a town, it's, it's a clerical error that the town did, and I think it would be. I don't see what advantage you'd have by removing it until. The next time that the person could go on, so I would leave it on and swap the paperwork. That would be my suggestion.
Because if that's not going, will, are there any legal challenges that that might entail?
Unless you had, I, the only legal challenge I can think of, if you had another like situation and you did it for one and didn't do it. For someone else, I can see that would be a challenge, but I don't believe we have, that's not the case. As far as giving the exemption, that is up to the board.
Okay.
I make a motion to accept what they say and give them the exemption to swap paperwork, right? Did I say that right?
Yeah.
Yes, that's the gist of it, yeah. Uh, I would second that. So, roll call, Marlo.
Hi.
Hi.
I'm in favor. Yeah, okay, we're all in favor. Okay, uh, moving on is board member appointments. That's the Conservation Commission and the Local River Advisory.
Chris Shadler had been appointed to the Conservation Commission back in two thousand nineteen. And due to the fact that she was also the ex officio member of select board, it made it a little murky, so. We're asking that she, that the board, uh, she wants to be reappointed to that commission. Um, that the board. Um, reappoint her at this meeting and we'll do a three-year term of expiring in twenty-four, twenty twenty-four.
Okay.
And for which, which commission, committee is?
Conservation Commission.
And how do usually the people get on that? If you want to be on the COMCOM.
If you wanted to be on the COMCOM, we have a form that you, they would fill out. You, depending, and of course Webster, everyone knows everybody else, but if you didn't know the person, we would invite them to come in and talk to the board. Outlining their interests to be on the board. And the select board would make a decision whether they thought they were a good fit for the committee and appoint them.
And just to clarify, this is a little bit different then as compared to, for example, planning board. Because that was put forth by Craig. And we basically like, we just approve it because it's coming from the planning board. So i- i- is this actually a different process or is it just because, because of a commission versus the, the board or?
I don't think of it as a different process. Although this appointment had been made in twenty nineteen. And I'm not, I'm, I'm trying to clean it up, I guess, is really what I'm saying is to make it clear. But any, any board that the, you know, that is in the town that select board appoints to. Um, I think has a. On the same playing field for to appoint people. And of course, it's always nice if the, of the chairman of the committee, um, supports it.
Which of course just resigned from the Conservation Commission. So do we, i- is this coming from the Conservation Commission or is this coming from Chris?
I believe this is coming from Chris.
Okay.
And I don't know. I, I guess that's a good question. I, I, I don't think they have a chairman, um, at the moment.
Yeah, they wouldn't until their next meeting.
Yeah.
Well, I don't know. I personally, if the people want to volunteer to do, be on committees in this town, I think volunteers are great. So.
I agree.
Motion to accept her nomination as the, on the Conservation Committee. She's done it before. She's good. So, but I like volunteers.
My only question would be, um, since this isn't coming from the Conservation Commission. Does it make sense to do the appointment for the three years or to do the appointment for? Until the time that would have expired after the three years that she got previously. So if you said that twenty nineteen, that would be twenty twenty-two.
Twenty twenty-two, you could do that as well.
That would, yeah, that would keep it clean probably because you don't want, because everybody's on it.
Cause usually they have a rotating.
Right, right. Yeah, that would do that. I'd leave it that way. And then she wants to do it again, she can, you know, sign up.
I'm okay either way. I, I think she's a perfect fit for the Conservation Commission, so.
Well, the only thing is everybody's on a rotating basis, so if you, then she'll be on the same rotating basis as somebody else. So that might be, it'd be a little cleaner to just leave it and then.
I mean, I think it would be if you reaffirmed the appointment, I think the confusion with the appointment was the fact that she was on the select board.
Yeah, because she went to chair and then had to resign chair to become the select board chair. So, okay. Why don't we have, why don't we make the motion then to reaffirm the existing appointment? Does that sound reasonable?
There, that's good.
All right. So I would make the motion that we reaffirm the Conservation Commission appointment of Chris Shadler. Serving the twenty nineteen three-year term.
Second.
Uh, roll call, Marlo.
Hi.
Myself, I.
Hi.
All right. Uh, and then we have the Local River Advisory Appointment.
Dan Moran has expressed interest to being reappointed to the local, the Warner River Local. River Advisory. He does, when he gave me his paperwork, he did mention on, in there that he was the chair of the Conservation Commission. And as you know, he resigned, uh, from that post last week. And if you were to. Appoint him with the contingent that we update his paperwork. I would recommend that.
I make emotional appoint him to Dan Moran. To the river, whatever it is.
Warner Local River Advisor.
One, thank you. I knew it had a long name.
I, I knew that you knew it.
I, I would second that contingent upon the correction of the, the paperwork. Uh, so roll call, Marlo.
Hi.
Myself, I, Dee. All right. Uh, moving along, tax warrant.
Ah, yes. Well, I'm pleased to say the assessors finished with all the updated paperwork and we just ran the warrant. I'm asking for the board to approve it. It's giving the tax collector orders to collect two million, six hundred ninety-two thousand, six hundred sixty-two dollars. With interest at eight percent from July second, the due date is July second. Thereafter and all sums not paid on or before that day. This is basically a boilerplate. Task that you do twice a year. And if you choose not to approve it, then we don't collect any taxes.
Then we're out of business.
And that gets to be a little, a little scratchy after a while.
All right. Are there any questions or, or concerns about this?
No.
All right. Uh, so I would move that we, uh, approve the tax warrant.
Second.
Uh, roll call, Marlo.
Hi.
Myself, I, Dee. All right. Last under new business is trustee payment method.
Um, I would like to withdraw that for now. I put the cart before the horse on that one. I really need to have a little more discussion with the trustee, so I'm sorry, I, but I would like to take that one off for now.
Sounds great. Shorter meeting.
Can I make a motion to take it off?
Uh, moving on to correspondence, uh, we have the NHDOT and a notice from Belmont.
Yeah, those were just, um. The Belmont notice was someone's putting a cell tower up over there. And again.
Is this a different notice than the, or a different tower location than the one we've gotten notice for?
Yeah, I think the last one you got, it wasn't Belmont, I'm pretty sure.
Wasn't Belmont. I'd have to go look at the agenda.
Yeah, I'd have to look too. I don't remember what it was, but it's the site distance. Um, I didn't realize we could see Belmont from Webster, but maybe.
Some of our hills can see all the way out to all kinds of mountains out in the west, so.
Okay, well, I know that if I stand on one leg out of the town office, I can see just up the road, but. Anyway, uh, that's why you have that one. Uh, New Hampshire DOT.
Which I believe is a bridge in Warner, correct?
Yeah, that was to, uh, advise you that. They are planning to replace the bridge in one twenty-seven that goes over the Warner River in Warner. Um, and if you would like to hear more about it, they'll be talking with the Warner Select Board tomorrow evening at seven o'clock via Zoom.
Perfect.
And the information's in that letter to connect on to that if you have interest.
And of course, the, the Warner Select Board also has all of their stuff and their Zoom links posted on their own website. So if you are interested, anybody should, uh, go check that out. All right. That brings us to public comment.
I have public comment.
Go for it.
Uh, so I screwed up with the permit applications. The temporary occupancy permit for RVs has to be granted by the select board. So we might need a motion on that one.
All right. Uh, so we'll delay public comment and we'll go back to that one then. Uh, do you want to present that quickly for the board?
So that was from our esteemed town clerk, Michelle. She is going to be having, I believe, her in-laws or her parents living on her property for an RV. living on her property for an RV for longer than 15 days. And per ordinance, if you're going to have them there for longer than 15 days, you need to get a temporary RV occupancy permit.
And to clarify, this is not an open-ended permit. This expires after X number of days.
Ninety days.
All right. Any questions or comments from the board?
Well, sounds good to me.
All right, I would make a motion that we accept the temporary occupancy permit for the RV.
Second.
Roll call vote, Marlo.
Hi.
Myself, I, Dee. All right. So now that that's done, we'll move along to, to more public comment time. I believe we have one public that's just public here. I will wait a moment. If they believe they're talking, they are muted. There you go.
I'm unmuted.
Yes, you are.
For tonight?
Yeah, we can hear you now.
You can?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay.
Can't see you.
I'm sorry. For tonight, I'm going to be quiet. So hold on to your hats. I'm not going to say anything. I got a lot to say, but I'm going to be good and be quiet. So thank you for offering us some public time.
Thank you very much. We, we appreciate all the public showing up and knowing what's going on.
Thank you.
All right. So that moves us on to Select Board motions and approvals. We'll be looking at the draft minutes. First, that's the draft minutes from our previous meeting on the third. And I will start with the one correction that I noticed. Sorry, Russ, it's not another, another meeting without a correction. And that was page one, line 44. We need to insert the word need. It's the town would emergency access, should be the town would need emergency access. And that is my only correction from those minutes. Any other comments or corrections from, or questions from the other board members?
Oh.
No.
We missed that. I didn't get my red pen out for that one.
All right, I would move that we approve the draft meeting minutes from 5:30, 2021, as amended.
Second.
Roll call vote, Marlo.
Hi.
Myself, I, Dee.
Hi.
All right. That moves us along to the accounts payable and payroll manifests. Which I need to bring up in front of me here. I had them and now they are a little bit sideways. So that's why, because I'm in the wrong folder. All right. Do you want to start with accounts payable or the payroll manifest?
The payroll.
All right.
He's like, I found it, go with payroll.
Hey, whichever one, you know, people have in front of them. All right, so we've got the payroll manifest, which totals $18,104.66. It's your standard issue payroll. Any questions, comments before we move on to approving? All right, well, so I would move that we I would, wait, this is a, yeah, this is normal. Sorry, I would move that we approve the payroll manifest for pay date 5/17/2021, for pay period 4/26/2021 to 5/9/2021. In a total of $18,104.66.
Second.
Roll call, Marlo.
Hi.
Myself, I, Dee.
Hi.
All right. And then moving along, that would bring us to accounts payable. And actually, a question I forgot to ask. Dana, I know you had mentioned that without taxes coming in as of yet, we were starting to look scarce on money. Do we actually have all of this with the school district payment? I assume the answer is easily yes, but I just want to double check.
Yes, and I'm, and I always raise the alarm probably much more prematurely, but I do get nervous when I get under a million. So, but yes, we do have the funds to cover it.
Okay. Any other questions or comments on the accounts payable check warrant?
Oh.
All right. So I would move that we accept the, approve the accounts payable check warrant for check date 5/17/2021. In the sum total of $311,394.06.
Second.
Roll call vote, Marlo.
Hi.
Myself, I, Dee.
Hi.
I can't wait till we can just all say I.
Well, I tried to move that along, Dave.
This is true. All right, and then we have the motions for the trustees of trust funds. Has everybody gotten a chance to look this over and the bill, associated bills that go along with that?
Yes.
All right. Any questions or comments?
No.
Sweet. All right, I would move that we request trustee of trust funds issue a check for $9,825 to Fleas and Flower Farm LLC for six invoices. Invoice 6398 in the amount of $2,870. Invoice 6399 in the amount of $2,340. Invoice 6403 in the amount of $1,860. And invoice 6405 in the amount of $1,645. All for road preservation work on Robie Road. Invoice 6,400 in the amount $570. Invoice 6,404 in the amount $540 for road preservation work on Closed Pin Bridge Road. These six invoices totaling $9,825 to come from the Road Preservation Expendable Trust Fund.
Second.
Roll call, Marlo.
Hi.
Myself, I, Dee.
Hi.
All right. I would move to request the trustee of trust funds issue a check for $2,880.80 to Bosco and Sand and Gravel for invoice P2004179 in the amount $931.42 and invoice P2004212 in the amount of $1,077.38 for materials for Closed Pin Bridge Road. This to come from the Road Preservation Expendable Trust Fund.
Hi.
Second first.
Sorry. I was waiting for Marlo to second it.
All right, second, second.
Okay, roll call, Marlo.
Hi.
Myself, I, Dee.
Hi.
All right, I would move to request trustee of trust funds issue a check for $1,824.20 to Everett J. Prescott Inc. for invoice 5855906 for materials for Robie and Wipocket Roads. This to come from the Road Preservation Expendable Trust Fund.
I second.
Roll call, Marlo.
Hi.
Myself, I, Dee.
Hi.
All right, I would move to request trustee of trust funds issue a check for $2,735 for invoice 14996085 to Capital Well Company Inc. For the replacement of the water pump at Town Hall. This to come from the Municipal Property Maintenance Expendable Trust Fund.
I second.
Roll call vote, Marlo.
Hi.
Myself, I, Dee. And finally, a motion to request the trustee of trust funds issue a check for $4,548.90 to VHB for invoice number 341334-24. These funds to come from the Bridge and Culvert Capital Reserve Fund.
I second.
Roll call, Marlo.
Hi.
Myself, I, Dee. All right. And I believe that concludes everything. That was, that was a very long agenda and we still made it in three hours. Even with lots of public comment and some debate. So congratulations and thank you, everybody, for your time and efforts.
Thank you.
See you all next at our next meeting, which now will be June 7th. So we will see you all again for that Select Board meeting.
Okay. Have a good night, everyone.
Yeah, I would make the motion that we close this meeting at 9:30.
Second.
All in favor.
Night, everybody.
Good night.